Welcome to everyone who's here today and thank you for attending our Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and will be webcast and the recordings will be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will be recording and rebroadcast our meeting. We've got no petitions today, but we do have three questions from members of the public. The agenda and report for today's meetings are available on the council's website and a small number of paper copies are also available today. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting today? There of course is no fire alarm planned test, but if there is an emergency evacuation, then please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Judas Square. And please can I ask each member of the committee in turn to introduce themselves? I'm Ben Miskel, I'm Chair of the committee and I'll go to Mike.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Chaplin, I'm councillor for Southie Ward and I'm substituting for councillor Craig Gamble-Pew.
Good afternoon, I'm Christine Gilligan-Cobo, I'm councillor for Hillsborough Ward and I'm Deputy Chair of this committee.
Good afternoon, my name's Ruth Mercer, I'm councillor for City Ward and I'm a member of this committee.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Denise Fox, local Bailey Ward, local councillor for Bailey Ward, sorry.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beecham Green Hall Ward and a member of this committee.
Andrew Sanger, councillor for Forward Ward and I'm the group spokesperson on this committee.
Councillor Ian Auckland, councillor for Graves Park Ward and a member of the committee.
Thank you. So item one on our agenda today is apologies for absence and an apology for absence has been received from councillor Craig Gamble-Pew and councillor Mike Chaplin is attending as his substitute as he has explained to us. Can I ask if there are any other apologies for absence today? I don't see any other apologies for absence that have come in. So therefore takes us on to item two, which is a standing item exclusion of the public and press. And the meeting today of course is open to the public and there are no items on the agenda containing exempt information that require us to call for the exclusion of the public or press. Item three on our agenda is an opportunity for members who wish to declare an interest in any of the items on our agenda. If you do, can I ask you to refer to the item business and state whether it's a pecuniary or a personal interest and ideally to outline the reason for the declaration. Councillor Sanger.
Thank you Chair. Item nine, a personal interest, I'm the Ward councillor for Forward and the item is the Forward 20 mile per hour scheme.
Thank you councillor Sanger. Would anyone else wish to make a declaration? No. We will note that in the minutes councillor Sanger. Item four is an opportunity for us to pass and look over the minutes of our previous meeting. Can I ask members to approve as a correct record the minutes of our meeting which was held on the 11th of December just before the Christmas break? Can I ask whether we can approve those as a formal record of our meeting? I've seen nods and no dissent, so therefore we will approve those minutes as a correct and accurate record of our last meeting on the 11th of December. Item five is public questions and petitions, a really important part of our meeting. We have received no petitions and have three public questions for today's meeting. There is a maximum allocated time of 30 minutes for this item, but it doesn't look like we will be taking all of that allocation and we do often have many more public questions and petitions. The first public question was submitted by Robin Hughes. Unfortunately, Robin is not in the room today, so we'll make sure that Robin has a written answer to his question. Our second is from Mr Morris who is in the room today. Mr Morris, would you be okay to come over to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, thank you councillors. I submitted this question early Friday night and by later Friday night I got notification on the latest Sheffield News email that actually there was a million pounds going to various things, so I'm very pleased and I thank you very much for doing that because I think it's very important. I still want to say some things, but I might have a different question if I hadn't seen that, but I'll read it out anyway. Would it be a positive development to publicise the use made of traffic infringement charges? By traffic infringement, I mean anything where people, even parking charges, I couldn't think of another word of saying it really briefly. So more detail on that. What use is made currently of funds collected? Is there a potential benefit in giving a higher profile to these funds and their use? Would such publicity facilitate the development and public acceptance of measures to move towards net zero? My reasons for asking this I think are because I think, I think to help the, have the council a positive image, I think it's important that we state as often as possible what is happening in terms of, in terms of developing a good future for Sheffield and that obviously means moving towards net zero. And I do think that, I think probably motorists wouldn't be happy with some of the things I'm suggesting, but I do think that along with the council's position of gradually adjusting the balance of power between cars and pedestrians and cyclists and active travellers, that this fits in with what you're actually working for. I think the items on the, that you've decided in the latest Sheffield News and on the Star it was reported, school streets encouraging modal shift, 20 mile an hour zones near schools, green walls, I think they're great, but what my only criticism would be, I think that they don't actually contribute to reducing the carbon footprint because they're just adjusting to it and they're protecting children from it and they're protecting children from the excesses of too much parking. What I do, so what I'm really asking for I think is that some of the money, I know with the CAS and the Arundel Gate, gate, bus gate, I think, I imagine in the future those funds are going to be diminishing as people get used to the fact that they're there, but I do think with parking, which is a pretty constant element of council finance and I mean, I think from 2122 it was about four and a half million pounds of profit in it, so I think that's a considerable sum and I know, I heard from the meeting this morning that that sum was, is mainly used for highways and maintaining, but I do think as well that if that sum could be, some of that sum could be used towards subsidising or improving public transport, like for example the 52A going through to Wisewood every day and maybe getting rid of some of those Sunday night services or Sunday services, evening services where there's a bus every two hours, that would actually contribute to people trusting the bus service more and help give people a reason not to take the car. I mean, it's a long shot, but I do think that would contribute more to carbon reduction, which, you know, which obviously the council, we're aiming for net zero by 2030, so. And the other reason I suppose is that there is a lot of scepticism about air quality. People don't believe, they don't seem to believe, they just pick out the figure of 500 premature deaths and they just joke about it, oh it's not 500. And I don't think they take the issue seriously, whereas where funds from parking were directly contributing towards better buses, I think they would, they would understand the link. They would like it, but they would, they would understand the link, whereas I think maybe the link between improving air quality, which is important, but they wouldn't necessarily see that and accept that as an issue. But I do think it's important, I mean, I think these things, there was a great article in the Star, that was excellent, but I think the council should do as much as possible to publicise as widely as possible. You know, those, those things that go on the roads, the electronic signs, parking charges mean safer, safer schools, parking charges give better buses, you know, this sort of thing, it really needs hammering because I don't think that the council's communications methods at the moment really get to the depths, get to the majority of the Sheffield public and I think that's a pity. That's it really, thank you. So really, tell the public about it openly, extensively and regularly. The more you can say it, the more widely you can say it, the better. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, Mr Mun. And I think, you know, I really do value the opportunities that we've had to meet outside the context of these meetings to discuss these issues, you know, it's quite clear that, you know, you are a big advocate of better public transport and better transport in our city. I think it's also clear that you've mentioned how poor air quality is a silent killer in Sheffield and actually it has to be a top priority for this council to be able to deal with and address. And you also mentioned that, so even though you didn't use those words, the social contract effectively that, that we have when people pay for charges to enter the clean air zone, that that needs to then go into measures to improve air quality, to improve road safety and to focus on dealing with poor air quality for some of the most vulnerable in society and that's what our Clean Air Investment Fund does. I think one of the things that I would say however, is that in order to improve our air quality, we do need government to step up and as a result of that, we have submitted a very ambitious bid to government as part of Zebra Two to bring around 60 EV buses to our city. And I went down on Monday to Leicester to see their EV buses that were in operation there. If we had more electric buses in our city, we know that we could clean our air and we know that actually we would deal with some of the worst emissions that we have in our city. You know, quite fundamentally, we don't want anyone to be paying our CAS fee for entry to the clean air zone, we actually want to drive change in our city and make air quality better. I know that you were at the Waste and Street Scene Committee this morning and therefore the wider answer that I am going to give to you is echoed by what was said at that committee, but having discussions with you before this meeting, I understand that the answer perhaps was read out rather quickly, so I will allude back to that and also hopefully, re-emphasise some of the points that were made there. Now in terms of traffic infringement charges, the council issues penalty charge notices for civil contravention of parking, bus lane and clean air zone restrictions. The police also issue fines for some parking, bus lane and other traffic related contraventions, but the council do not derive any income from those fines. The parking and bus lane penalty charge notice issued by the council contributes towards the overall annual parking account, which isn't overseen by this committee. The council publishes the account annually on its website and the use of the parking accounts, I'm informed, even though it isn't something that we have direct oversight in this committee, perhaps we might like to, but it isn't, is regulated by section 55.4 of the Road Traffic Regulations Act of 1984 and the Civil Enforcement of Road Traffic Contraventions Applied Devices Charging Guidelines and General Provisions Regulation of 2022. These regulations set out the purpose for which income beyond the cost of running the parking services can be used and those provisions are the provision of maintenance of off-street parking, funding public transport, which I know is an issue close to all of our hearts and yours particularly, Mr Morris, highways and road improvement, which of course does include active travel, purposes of environmental improvement and in previous years, surpluses have been spent on highways maintenance. The penalty charge notice is for the clean air zone, regulated by Part Three of Schedule 12 of the Transport Acts 2000, Part Six and Six of the Road User Charging Scheme and Regulations of 2013. In the event that net proceeds are generated from the scheme over the opening 10-year period, these proceeds will be applied to facilitate the achievements of relevant local transport policies in Sheffield's transport strategy and the Sheffield City Region Transport Strategy in accordance with the following high level spending objectives, so supporting the delivery of the ambitions of the scheme and promoting cleaner air, supporting active travel and public transport use and supporting zero emissions and sustainable infrastructure and actions in and around the city to improve air quality. Now reports to the TRC Committee today, we'll recommend, or we'll be discussing this later, endorsing the proposal for a Clean Air Investment Fund, which will commit an initial one million pounds of CAS income which is generated to accelerate air quality improvement initiatives around school and improve air quality for children travelling to school. Now I can't speak on behalf of the Waste and Street Scene Committee, but for our committee I do believe that visible positive examples of clean air and climate action is incredibly important. Actions such as more school streets and green walls for example, give visible example to residents as a benefit of CAS and what any additional income will be spent on, it will be giving that money back to the community. The clean air zone has always been about improving the air that we breathe and I think that we as a council do need to be clear on the benefits that CAS will bring and how this money will be spent to the benefit of Sheffield residents. This is a social contract that we must make with Sheffield residents and it is only right that people be aware of what the money is being spent on to bring about positive environment and clean air. In terms of publicising the use of any, any income that's generated, council officers brought a public report to the annual parking, of the annual parking accounts to the Waste and Street Scene Policy Committee in December, I understand, with detail on the work that was undertaken by Parking Services to manage traffic and support bus priority measures. The report to TRC Committee on CAS income will be accompanied by a press release and ongoing communications plan related to clean air improvements, which you've talked a little bit about today. The council is of course keen to promote net zero and measures to increase public transport patronage and those are in central strands to improve our overall carbon emissions in the city. We would all in this committee welcome further discussions with you sir on these matters, but also anything else that you'd like to advocate on behalf of citizens in the city, so thank you. Thank you. Our third question is from Mr Slack who has submitted a question but is not in the room today, but we'll make sure that he gets a written answer to his question that he has posed. We'll therefore move on to item six, which is members' questions and there are no members' questions today. Item seven is the work programme and Amanda Clayton from Democratic Services is going to present a report to us. Amanda.
Thank you Chair. Just draw your attention to page 28 where you'll find the recommendations, but also a reference from the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, which you'll see from the work programme, will be addressed at our March committee meeting, that's with regards to the committee's climate statement. And aside from that, you can see the amendments and the new items listed, unless anyone else has been told.
Thank you very much Amanda. Do I see any comments, questions or concerns from colleagues in the room? Councillor Sanger.
Thank you Chair. Can I just, can I just say that really pleased that we've got a work programme that's manageable or largely manageable and I think that's a great testament to big progress on where we were 12 months ago, so really pleased about it. Just in terms of next month's meeting, are we going to get all of this done and how big are some of these reports? So we've got Sheffield Transport Strategy and we've got obviously the new climate statement and we've obviously got the next roadmap and then I notice over the page, we've still got three items that we've not yet allocated, are we, are we really at this point saying those three items are moving to the next municipal year?
Thank you councillor Sanger. I think with regards to the transport vision that will be brought to our next committee, clearly they'll want to be, people, members will want to make contributions, but that will have been developed at a cross-party committee or workshop, so I would hope that that wouldn't take us a huge amount of time to be able to deal with, but I think you raised a number of legitimate questions about the length of the agenda. I will just ask for some guidance from Will Stewart, who I think can perhaps shed some light on that for us.
Thanks Chair and I do, and I do recognise councillor Sanger's concern there about the length of the agenda for March. I think what we're going to need to do is be really, really clear, both officers and members, that we're going to have to move through quite expediently through that agenda, there's a lot of stuff to get through before we close for pre-election period. There are a couple of things as you've mentioned Chair, where there've been extensive briefing, so hopefully there won't need to be too much explanatory debate in the chamber, it will be about comments and members making their opinions known. The other one that I would add to that would be the, would be the decarbonisation roadmap, which again has been developed up in consultation with, with the group and actually has been to S and R as well already, so there's been a fair amount of oversight on those statements, so hopefully we should be able to get through that relatively quickly. In terms of the items that we were looking at to bring forward which didn't have a date, I think we're now going to suggest that the Exor Road Road Safety Project comes after we reconvene, so that's something which we need to just do a little bit more work on. Obviously we gave a briefing for members on that probably in the last few weeks, so that's been developed to the next phase and probably will come in, in June or July. So I hope that we are managing the agenda so that we can get through as much as possible, but some of these items that we do have on there are time limited, so we will need to discuss them in the chamber in March, but I'd be happy to kind of pick up with members in the next briefing session after this committee, just to give another run-through of the proposed March agenda so that everyone feels comfortable.
Thank you Will. Councillor Sanger.
Yes, I'm very much welcome that response. Obviously I think I interpreted that as meaning that Crooks Valley Road, Harcourt Road and Barnsy Road schemes, we are going to make, obviously they're going to make, you know, every attempt to get them on the agenda and I very much welcome that and as I say, I do understand that a number of these reports are, are subject to workshops and joint working, so they may not need a very long time at this committee, but I mean, I welcome the progress we're making on the work. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanger for your comments and contributions there. And of course we know that the work programme will remain that live document and it'll be brought before every committee meeting, the recommendations are outlined on page 28. Do I see the committee in agreement that we can pass and approve our work programme going forward? I do, there's many nods in the room, so therefore our work programme is carried forward, is passed, it's a live document, but we'll make sure that that informs our planning for future meetings. Item eight is our regeneration programme update. We know that we have many exciting regeneration projects across our city and this is an exciting report that talks through the whole regeneration project and brings it together because sometimes we can see them as isolated schemes that are happening, but we know that huge amount of work is going on to make sure that Sheffield is a city on the up and to drive forward these, these projects that deliver for both the city centre and communities across our city. Alan, I think you are going to present a report to us and thank you very much for putting it together.
Thank you Chair. That's quite a build-up, I hope we can live on three. So this report provides updates on regeneration programmes in Sheffield city centre and also in the economic hubs of Attcliff and Stockbridge that are led by a rather significant input from the city regeneration team. Cleanless Valley regeneration and things like Advanced Manufacturing Investment District stroke Investment Zone are not covered in this update as they are led by housing growth or economy and skills colleagues, as they require the specialist knowledge colleagues bring to those programmes. Furthermore, the report doesn't cover business as usual type work, which includes liaison on some private developments and investment by, and major investments by both universities that the team also feed into. The report provides some strategic context from the city centre's strategic vision and provides summary updates to projects both in delivery and in development. Activity relating to Gateway to Sheffield Look Programme and the Attcliff Leveling Up Fund are mentioned briefly as detailed updates to both those projects provided to Transport Regen and Climate Committee in November 2023. So moving on to the city centre vision, the city centre vision sets out the council's plans to create a thriving, livable and sustainable city centre. New homes and neighbourhoods will deliver housing-led growth with supporting investment vital to creating places where people want to live. Commercial developments like Heart of the City, Westbourne Cascade will create space for high-value jobs and transform the city centre offer. There will be new places to shop, eat and drink, socialise, explore and relax and will create vibrancy. The cultural offer will be transformed, bringing a quality of experience unique in the city region. Enhanced transport connectivity will ensure the opportunities created are accessible to people across South Yorkshire. Consultation on the city centre strategic vision took place between January and February 2022 and the vision has now been approved by the council. A central component of the vision is repopulation of the city centre with new homes, amenities and workspaces to deliver approximately 20,000 new homes that we need to create new city centre neighbourhoods, attractive, safe places that will create the demand for new homes and provide the infrastructure facilities such as schools, GPs and outdoor spaces to enable a wide range of people to live in them. Creating these permanent communities will make the city centres more vibrant, more viable and more sustainable. Encouraging more people to live here will ensure it is activated, populated and safe by day and night. This new population will help sustain shops, restaurants, bars and the leisure offer, which can then be accessed by and create jobs for the wider city. As well as new homes, there'll be areas of the city centre neighbourhoods which have a different primary role such as commercial, learning or retail. This is about creating opportunities for all Sheffield residents, no matter their background. So we'd like to move on to those projects that are currently in delivery and these rather are already underway or were successful, have been funded and about to start. These include Heart of the City. Heart of the City is a council-led mixed-use development of over one and a half million square feet, including new offices, homes, hotel, leisure and retail developments. The project is now entering its final phase with the buildings now moving to be let. It's already the home to HSBC, CMS and Kubo, new office occupiers including Henry Wood Construction and Isaac House and D L L Piper at Alshaw House. Swedish fashion brand Monkey and Weekday moved to the ground floor units in 2019 with Marmaduke's Cafe opening in early 2020 and recently followed by Danish homewares retailer Sostren Green in July 2023. More recently, Swedish fashion brand Falraven and independent menswear retailer Yard Store are due to open in spring 2024 and there will be more recently, and even more recently announced Cream Store on the ground floor of Burgess House. Further offers in retail, food and beverage listings have been negotiated and more announcements will follow this year. In total, 44% of the floor space is now let with a further 8% at head-to-term stage and moving to be let. In addition, the new hotel is under management agreement and adds a further 14% of the floor space that is total, meaning a total of 64% of floor space has an agreed future use. On residential use, 52 new flats in Burgess House and across Burgess Street have been sold to new owner occupiers with the council not allowing sale to investors. Kangaroo Works is a lot that we sold for private development that has now completed and there are further 365 high-quality rental apartments built there, which we understand are now almost 90% occupied or agreed to be occupied. Pounds Park's been opened, which provides a high-quality public park in the city centre. It also provides important public space for all city centre users, including the growing number of new residents. The scheme's final phase will see the occupation of Bethel Chapel as a new music venue and the former Henry's Wine Bar will become a new food hall and restaurant. At the same time, Lea's Yard will open for independent business and maker space. The former Gomont Building is being prepared for leisure and culture use and the new 154 bed Travis and Blue Hotel in Pinces Street is also due to be completed in 2024. Finally, the new Bike Hub is Finally, the new bike hub is on schedule to be opened by the end of spring 2024. Two final development plots on either side of Pounds Park remain to be taken to the market for either residential or office commercial use. Ring parallel to this work, the agreement released to bring the Coles Building back into use by Urban Splash is progressing and a full update on the proposed agreement release of the former Coles Building was provided to Stratton Resources Committee on 23 December 2023. Moving on to Devonshire Quarter, currently on the market and to be fully occupied by December 24, there are 97 new homes in the converted Grade 2 listed eyewitnessing salon works and there's new build at Brunswick on the rear of that, which has been completed by Capital and Centric. In addition, an amended planning application was granted in February 23 for the development of 410 residential apartments together with retail, commercial space on the current Bank Park Car Park on Milton Street. And in August 2023, another planning mission was granted for the development of 16 new homes and four commercial units on the former Stoggs tiles warehouse by CODA, which I now understand is also now on site. Building on this work, the previously bought construction site at Thomas Street and Hodgins Street has been remediated by the council using an allocation of £254,000 from Brownfield Land Release Fund, which has been secured through a fund provided by One Public Estate. Once complete, this site and the adjacent council of Milton Street Car Park will be brought forward for residential development. At the same time, the former Edson Hall church site and Thomas Street compound site are under discussions between developers and occupiers of other buildings with the assembled potential of further residential development. On future High Streets Fund, following wide-ranging stakeholder engagement and public consultation throughout 2019 and 2020, a successful business case submission to government for investment of £15.8 million was secured. The future High Streets Fund vision includes three key interventions. Investment in the public realm and infrastructure, including new paving, lighting, seating and planting with underground infrastructure for events and a communal underground bin system. Event Central, including the acquisition of 2026 Fargate and refurbishment as a cultural hub with a live performance venue and Front Door Scheme, which work with private landlords to provide grant support to bring forward new faces, new spaces for vacant or underused upper floor space, improve shop fronts and public realm and add public art interventions targeted at Chapel Walk. On each of those, on the public realm, following the report to TRC in February 23, the works have been phased and the Fargate works have commenced and the design work on High Street and Castle Gate has currently been reviewed. Event Central, 2026 Fargate was acquired in August 21. Planning permission was granted in October 22 and a programme of temporary events hosted up until March 23. Due to cost pressures and construction constraints resulting from adjacent public realm works, both the scheme's design delivery programme has been reviewed by the design team with a preferred operator and contractor with a view to start on site in January 25. And last week, there was an announcement that we've appointed a new contractor for that scheme. On the Front Door Scheme, a total of £4.1 million of grant funds has been awarded under this intervention. 33 to 35 Fargate, which is occupied by Ratun, Orchard Square outdoor space, including new paving and surfacing, Central Campus and Shop Campus, and the residential conversion of vacant upper floors. The Montgomery Theatre, Chapel Walk and Renew Sheffield are all to be included in the next phase of this, which will be launched in 2024. As well as £15.8 million from the Future High Streets Fund, the scheme is supported by £5 million of council home funds and up to £11.9 million from SIMCA. Further SIMCA gainshare funding to adjust cost increases across all three interventions are being pursued. And that is due to be considered by SIMCA board in November 2023. It says here, I think that must have slipped, and we'll find out later latest update on where that is. Funding expectation deadline for the Future High Streets Fund was initially for March 2024, but in common with Leveling Up Fund schemes, that's been extended to March 2026. Moving on to Westbar Square, this development is now on site and construction of two blocks of 368 new residential apartments is underway with anticipated completion by December 2024. The development will see over seven acres of development, £300 million of investment, providing almost 1 million square foot of space in total. When completed, in addition to offices, it will also contain retail, leisure, hotel, living space and a transport hub. The first of the five new office buildings with the largest footprint available in Sheffield has also started as anticipated that Office One will complete by summer 2024. Marketing of Office One has now started and the building is attracting a lot of interest from potential tenants. This has been a culmination of partnership work between the city council, the developer Erbo and Legal and General to assemble the site for development using CPO powers, securing private funding, securing funding to bridge viability gaps. The development will provide much-needed grade A office space, helping to attract major employers and creating quality employment opportunities. It will also provide homes in high-quality environments and provide quality public space that will help to nick Kellam into the city centre and connect it to Great Green and the ongoing development of Castle Gate. Legal and General's support for Phase One scheme is in the order of £160 million. Support from Legal and General for Phase Two is likely to take this investment to over £300 million. And this investment has been supported by SIMCA through the Housing Brownfield Fund of £655,000. SIMCA have also provided £3 million towards the cost of public realm and infrastructure works. Projects also being supported by a £1.2 million loan from the Jessica Fund. Moving on to Castle Gate, I'd say a detailed update of this report was, project was provided to Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee in November 2023. Since then, there have been further changes to the site and the project related to Market Tavern and Muffet Building. Market Tavern was found to be a dangerous structure and the current tenants of the Muffet Building need to be vacated whilst work to make the Market Tavern safe were pursued. In the course of this work, the Market Tavern was found to be structured on sound and the fourteen demolition was required to remove the danger presented by the building. Measures have been taken for this work to be carried out whilst allowing the tenants of the Muffet Building to move back in. To support the work on the Cascade Love and Bridge gaps in funding caused by cost price inflation and outline business cases part of the gainshare programme for an additional £5 million has been submitted to SIMCA. Finally, although not part of the Loaf Fund Programme after the recent Cascade Area Board meetings, discussions about reintroducing work on the conservation area status for Cascade have begun. On Attcliff, a detailed update of this project was provided to TRC in November 23. And since the additional update from that report, the main thing is that there's, in partnership with Homes England, consultants have been engaged to update the Attcliff Area Action Plan and produce an updated framework that reflects the work that is now underway in the area and support future plans for Attcliff. At Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park, following the demolition of the Don Valley Stadium, a partnership Legacy Park Limited was formed to oversee the redevelopment of the site. Redevelopment of the Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park is in accordance with a negotiated development agreement between the council and Scarborough International Group, a development partner and with the agreement of Legacy Park Limited. A master plan for the wider site is being prepared for submission in early 2024 as the next step in securing agreements and funding for the future phases of the development. On Attcliff Waterside, originally working along with other landowners, three parcel land were brought together to select a single development partner to bring forward an important residential site on an important gateway to Attcliff. A preferred development partnership was selected by three landowners and discussions entered into a development agreement began. To improve the pace of discussions and the development agreement and to simplify the project, the city council applied for a successful securing funding to acquire the land and interest of the other owners and brought the project into a single ownership. The development agreement has been signed and a planning application for the first phase of 1,000 new homes is due to be approved in April by the planning committee. So City will have submitted that and it's due to be approved in April. It's anticipated the start and the development will take place in the summer of 2024. Phase One scheme has already attracted grants of £4 million from the council, to the council from SIMCA's Brownfield Housing Fund, which was used to support the acquisition of land and will assist in demolition and other abnormal costs. City will have submitted a further application to SIMCA, which will assist with infrastructure costs, including provision of a new active travel bridge across the canal. Parkwood Springs, in November 23, the city council was provisionally awarded up to £19.3 million for the Parkwood Springs project as part of the third round of Leveling Up Fund. A validation process has been underway with government since that announcement and it's anticipated that the award from government will be confirmed in March 2024. Funding will have to be spent by March 2026 and as much work as possible to progress the project is being carried out in anticipation of confirmation of the funding. Some of the government's arrangements for the Loaf projects are being put in place and the local MPDial Furnace has agreed to chair the Parkwood Loaf Board. The project will deliver necessary infrastructure enabling works to unlock the potential of Parkwood Springs as a country park in the city, a valuable amenity for Sheffield communities with leisure facilities of international standard and significance. The project will remediate, develop site, create critical transport connections and directly address the market failures that have previously thwarted the site's regeneration. Key benefits include the delivery of vital new green space for adjoining communities, encouragement of active travel, sport and outdoor activity, improved pride of place and the creation of a major new cultural and leisure destination for Sheffield. There's been a long-term aspiration to develop Parkwood Springs, a highly accessible green long north of the city centre with a rich set of opportunities for people of all backgrounds, ages and abilities to enjoy. This is not just important for obvious health, education, environmental and economic benefits, but is central to the larger ambition of cementing Sheffield's reputation as the UK's preeminent outdoor city. Moving on to finally in delivery, Stockbridge Town Deal. Stockbridge Town Deal is a project that is governed by a Stockbridge Town Deal Board. City council acts as the accountable body for the fund and officers in the city council provide advice to the board. The town deal was first announced in 2019 as well as 101 UK towns invited to bid for a share of £3.6 billion of government fund. Stockbridge Town Fund was awarded £24.1 million, which was confirmed by the government early in 2023. In common with other regeneration projects, construction and material costs have increased significantly and the board has carried out a programme of prioritisation for each project within the bid. The focus is key projects which are going to make the biggest difference to develop a High Street that everyone from Stockbridge can be proud of. The largest investment is on Manchester Road in a new library and community hub building. The working title for the new building is Stockbridge 519. A planning application for the building has been submitted and is hoped that work could then start in late spring 2024. And then coming on to pipeline projects, in support of the city centre vision, the council is working with partners on several master plans to support the city centre strategic vision. Particularly, the master plan supports Sheffield's vision of providing approximately 20,000 new high-quality homes in the city centre as set out in the draft Sheffield Plan, local plan. The work on the city centre strategic vision also includes the development of a number of priority neighbourhood frameworks that envision the creation of new distinctive mixed-use developments, underpinned by master plan projects to develop. Furnace Hill, Neeps End and Moorfoot are identified in the priority neighbourhood frameworks as priority locations and catalyst sites. These sites are considered to have the greatest potential impact on the acceleration of housing-led regeneration. At the same time, the Station Campus has been identified as an equally important area for master plan development. Based on previous work on the Sheep Valley Framework, the station area is key to bringing forward a mix of development in a sustainable location. The vision is transformed, so then there's a brief summary of each of the master plan areas. So for Furnace Hill, the vision is transformed. Furnace Hill and Neeps End are two distinct and vibrant urban neighbourhoods, capitalising upon their historic and natural assets to create a varied townscape with a network of new public spaces and streets to improve legibility and connections between the city centre and Kellam Island. There's a strong focus on connectivity, placemaking, community buildings, housing mix, tenure and topologies. For Moorfoot, the vision is to create a distinctive and welcoming new central neighbourhood, offering a compact contemporary living located at the heart of Sheffield. At the centre, a network of active travel routes, residents of Moorfoot will easily access both the city centre and the surrounding neighbourhoods to the south. A new public square will become the civic focus both for residents' daily enjoyment and for visitors attending outdoor events. For Station Campus, centred on Sheffield Railway Station, the campus will create a new gateway to the city. Partners on this project include Homes England, London and Continental Railways, Network Rail, South Yorkshire Combined Authority and Sheffield City Council. The proposed mixed-use scheme will address longstanding access issues and provide a new foot cycle bridge to improve connectivity to and from nearby neighbourhoods and encourage active travel. It will deliver both new homes, commercial floor space and help the city's ambition of sustainable city centre living and increasing high-value jobs. And finally, Connected Places. The Connecting Sheffield Programme is developing transformational series of complementary connections to the above regeneration projects. Connecting Sheffield will provide high-quality infrastructure and public realm to improve conditions for people walking, wheeling and cycling within the city centre and on key connections to the city centre. Certain routes will also see improvements to make public transport a more attractive choice with better environment information at key bus stops and other measures to ensure that delayed buses is minimised so they run on time and reliable. Improvements on Pinstons Street will be implemented to complement and improve the connection between the Moor and Fargate. Public realm improvements, including landscape and sustainable urban drainage, will be introduced to echo the successful Great Green schemes. This will improve the setting of the new Rasmblu Hotel and the Wild Heart of the City to development, making the space more attractive to spend time with opportunities for cafe seating and future events. An improved walking, wheeling and cycling route between Pinston Street, Arundel Gate and Howard Street will connect the Steel Route to the City Gold Route. Improved public realm, including a new bus stop, will soon be completed on Rockham Street adjacent to Pounds Park. The Connecting Sheffield Programme will provide high-quality connections between the city centre and Kellam Island via Centre Street and Westbar, which complements the work at Westbar and extends the success of Great Green towards Kellam and Neeps End. City centre and Darnall and Attcliff will connect into the community in this area, the Olympic Legacy Park and the future regeneration of Attcliff and the Cascade Development area in the city centre. And city centre to the Red Scheme, connecting the community in this area and providing high-quality connections to the future Moorfoot development. City centred South West Corridors will provide improvements to public transport corridors, enhancing bus journey times and reliability. Further work that builds on the above connections between city centre regeneration programmes will be required to ensure that we are maximising the potential benefits of our investment in transforming the city and supporting future sustainable growth. A new piece of work that builds on all the above activities required to look both at the connections between city centre to regeneration programmes. And in particular, this work will pick up past work on the Gold Route, Steel Route and other past strategic links. Look at the new spaces being created at Pounds Park, Castle Gate and at Parkwood and refresh what might be needed to ensure that placemaking, better cycling and walking routes are considered properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I guess that list didn't even allow you to take an opportunity for breath of air, didn't it? It does show, doesn't it, just how ambitious our regeneration projects are across this city, you know, led by this committee and a really small group of officers. It shows what ambition that we've all got for our city and working in partnership with communities. We've got Heart of the City, Fargate, Westbar, Castle Gate, Devonshire Quarter, Attcliff Regeneration, Stockbridge, the Olympic Legacy Park, Attcliff Waterside, Parkwood Springs. And then there's all those huge different pipeline projects like Furnace Hill and Neeps End, Moorfoot, Station Master Plan, all that works with Homes England. It shows us, doesn't it, that Sheffield is a city on the up, developing 20,000 new homes in the city centre, all of those regeneration projects to boost our economy and create a more sustainable city. So thank you, Alan, for bringing that report to us today. Do I see any colleagues who would like to firstly ask a question or point of clarification? And then we'll move into an opportunity to debate the actual report. I think I saw councillor Shaw first, and I'll make a list of everyone else. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. The Market Tavern has attracted a lot of public attention over the last couple of months, rightly so. Could you just run us through the timeline events since this committee met in November leading up to the demolition of the Market Tavern, please?
In terms of where we got to with that, I think I might bring Shaw in on this if that's all right. But where we got to, if we started work on this, I mean, it became more and more evident that it was structured and sound as we moved through it. I think I'd rather defer to Shaw to walk through the timetable for it, if that's all right.
Thank you, Alan. I think before Shaw comes in, I think it is important to say that these matters are now subject to an internal investigation that will become public because transparency is really important to us as a council and we need to learn lessons from whatever has happened here. So there may be limits to what our officers can say on this particular matter, but transparency is important and we need to make sure that the outcomes of that internal investigation are made public, not least to members of this committee, but also to wider stakeholders across the city. not least to members of this committee, but also to wider stakeholders across the city. Shaun.
Thanks, councillor Miskell. So just to give the broad background. The original project for Castle Gate included for the renovation and retention of the Market Tavern building. And it was during November last year, while we were undertaking asbestos surveys in that building, that there were serious concerns raised around the condition of the building. That declared the building to be deemed a dangerous structure and work was commenced to deal with that in terms of the chimneys that were leaning within the building. That work was undertaken and following the removal of the chimneys, further assessment was undertaken of the building that declared the whole building a dangerous structure. A press release, I think, was issued around the 20th of December that unfortunately, in view of that, the view of the council and both from the team in terms of the structural end assessing that and in the council's public duty role in terms of the building control manager, declared that building a dangerous structure. So work was then prepared for the full demolition. We then had meetings with heritage stakeholders around the 9th of January, where we discussed the work on that building. Work then proceeded to review options around that and it is that those issues that have subsequently come to light that some of the information that the council issued at that time has found to be not fully factually correct. And it's probably at that point that we need to pause and wait for the outcome of that investigation that councillor Miskell has mentioned, that will, in terms of the information that was published and the statement that was issued last week by the council over that matter.
Thank you, Shaun. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Shaun. I mean, there have been a number of thing, reports in the press about what may have happened. So, for instance, the council gave permission accidentally to the contractor to go ahead with the demolition. Is that not correct?
That is what the, subject to the internal investigation, I think. And until that's been fully investigated, it wouldn't be appropriate to comment on that at this stage.
It might be useful, councillor Shaw. I think one of the individuals who posed a public question today did ask a similar question and I prepared an answer for that individual. Of course, I will make sure that that is provided in written format, but I'll just go to it if you wouldn't mind. We know that an investigation, as we've talked about, has commenced, it's commenced this week, to understand the events of the 10th of January and why inaccurate information was shared over this matter. I can confirm that this is being undertaken by someone independently of the project and outside of the regeneration and development team. It is the aim that this initial investigation will be concluded by the end of the month. The next steps will be informed by the outcome of that investigation. It's important that we don't prejudge that and as a committee, of course, we'll be mindful of that. And the outcome of that investigation will be shared. So I think it's important that we, as a committee, are aware of that. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question, hopefully that's not going to prejudge the outcome of the investigation. How much did the demolition cost the council?
I've not got those figures to hand and the work's not fully been completed on site. So we can make sure that the final cost of the demolition is reported back through the committee once that's known.
And thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor Fox.
Thank you. It's all very exciting and thank you for the report. A lot, we talk about the transport and my issue is, you know, we haven't got a very good transport system at the moment. Do we have any plans to, you know, work with whatever we've got, whatever is going next, you know, whether it's the tram system or the buses, to link up these areas that we're going to improve and build and bring in more housing? We need those links and at the moment we haven't got them. So it would be catastrophic if we didn't look at that and see what's been proposed.
Thank you councillor Fox. I think it's probably important as well to focus on, as a committee, that we are bringing forward a transport vision document, which will be really ambitious for delivering public transport and transport more broadly for Sheffield. And that will be coming to our next committee meeting. We'll also, and we are currently also working in conjunction with SYMCA on a tram vision. So how we expand our tram network, because 30 years ago, we know that ambitious politicians in this city created the tram network. And that is just about to be brought in-house. But we also need to make sure that we've got an ambitious vision for enhancing and improving the tram network using the heavy rail infrastructure. So that means the Dom Valley Line all the way out to Stockbridge and also Barrow Hill to go through the south-east of Sheffield and hopefully all the way out to Chesterfield and using our tram network and expanding it further. So the tram vision will be a document that talks about expanding our public transport network and really delivering many of the issues that councillor Fox talks about. Alan.
I think that's exactly the point and, you know, those future investment things are things that we're keeping an eye on and we will try and incorporate them as they come forward. They'll be really important for things like Parkwood. They're really important for what we're doing at the station. And the station project actually started out of talks around HS2. That's now gone away. We're trying to build on what transport investment remains to build on that. And the connections between the particular things, it's not always directly within our control, but we always have an eye on the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Ben. I just think that we need to have our eye on that as well as all these developments. We need to have our eye on the transport and the links. It's important to get people around. Another question I'd just like to raise is the office space. We seem to be building a lot of office space and that is, that sounds fantastic, but is there a need for it? Because there's more and more people working from home now and when we probably looked at this originally, we had more people working in offices. Is that office space still required in the amount that we are building?
We're certainly seeing the demand for the space, so we've been able to let the space that we're building. At West Bar, the interest is really kind of strong. The amount of office space we're building, we rely on colleagues in planning to tell us how much space we need. The totality of everything we're building at West Bar is only five years' worth of supply, we're told, for great office space. Demand seems to be evidenced in that. I think post-Covid, I haven't got strong evidence for this, but the picture that seems to be emerging is that demand for the space is back to pre-Covid levels. That might not mean that you've got exactly the same number of people in that space, but the demand for the space is back to those pre-Covid levels.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fox. And I think it's probably important to say, isn't it? You know, the evidence from Heart of the City shows that there is demand for high-quality office space in our city, like Elshaw House. And we know that actually we've had huge success at being able to get tenants within Elshaw House. It's 70,000 square foot of office space, but it's higher quality office space, isn't it? So businesses are attracted there because of the high environmental standards, but also because of what can be offered for workers who are going to be in that office space, a very different type of office than we've envisaged in the past. Councillor Sanger.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, others were before me, but I'm happy to go in whatever order suits you.
Apologies councillor Sanger. I will ask others to raise their hand. At the moment I've got councillor Sanger, councillor Chaplin and councillor Merzouga. Okay, councillor Auckland, okay, councillor Gilligan Kubo. So councillor Auckland.
All right. Yeah, so just on the question of office space, a bit following on from councillor Fox's question. So we'll have evidence, market intelligence, presumably the projections from planning that substantiate a level of optimism behind the demand for the office space. And I'm assuming that each project or the overall project has risk register and RAG ratings. And during the course of reading this report and the discussion, which, because the report's largely narrative and it shows an enormous breadth and depth of activity, presumably the risk register is encouraging. And perhaps, Chair, perhaps a question for us is maybe it's something we ought to keep an eye on in a formal sense as part of our committee responsibilities, but I'm assuming it's looking pretty green all over at the moment.
Those projects do have risk registers. We use them within, obviously groupings to manage the projects. Whether they're green or not, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I think the picture where we are is that we are confident in what we are doing and where we are involved. We aren't the only provider out there. There will be private sector developments coming forward. What we're trying to do is meet the gaps in that in terms of quality provision.
On the face of it, Chair, the council itself, in my mind, has taken on a quite a burden of risk. And so we would need to be sure about the level of risk that we're taking on. But, you know, I totally accept nothing ventured, nothing gained to make us, to get things going. On West Bar, the ownership structure, so some of that's pre-led to Legal and General. So Legal and General have invested, but I think they will have covenants against that. I would have thought that we paid our investment so that the private investment has got some cover. And I guess I'm really asking about the balance of risk and reward between the council, people who've given us grant funding, which may or may not be at risk of clawback, and private sector investment in these schemes. It's quite a big question, I guess, Alan, but I hope we can make some sense of where we are.
I hope I can give you some sense for an answer. I think the key point around the investment from Legal and General, in order to make that more viable, we've really welcomed Legal and General's investment because they are taking a longer outlook of it. So they're being more patient for when their return needs to come back. So it means that they're prepared to wait longer for a return. That is the nature of their investment and that's what makes the difference.
Thank you. And the overall sort of like risk, balance of risk between and reward between the council and other public funding and private investment.
I mean, the balance of risk at West Bar is more on the private sector than it is on the council. The council's main balance of risk there is in terms of what we've done on Office One in taking a lease rap on the building to encourage a start. But if we get the occupation of that as well as we think we will, then that risk is being managed.
We're taking on more risk in the heart of the city. Would that be fair?
I think councillor Auckland, I think Shaun would like to come back on that.
Yeah, I guess at the end of all this, Chair, the key thing I was getting at is shouldn't we, as a committee, have some sort of view about the risk register as well as being quite rightly cheerfully optimistic and positive?
I think it's a really good point and it goes back to having an ambitious programme here and how do we provide programme updates to the committee? Of course, some of that comes in our knowledge, briefings that happen outside the formal context of these committee meetings that are public. I think we do need to improve that and improve that programme information as we develop more pipeline projects. And that's something perhaps that we can reflect on. Shaun.
Yeah, I think just on Heart of the City, I think members of the committee that have been around will remember that this was an iteration of a long time since we talked about what was going to happen in the city centre. And I think from somewhere cabin, it was about 40 years ago that I think we first started talking about what we needed to do to address the decline and change of Sheffield city centre. So previous private sector agreements fell by the wayside. The council stepped in as developer and took a really bold move to take into its control how we wanted the city centre to look. And the scheme we've now got is very different to what we may have had at the previous new retail quarter come to bear. So the council has taken the risk on that. It's taken a bold move on that. And I think it's about providing that new type of city centre to promote development. In terms of the finances, regular reports on the Heart of the City finances are reported to finance committee. We can by all means share those reports with members of this committee as well. So in terms of the financial risk of where we are, they're reported through finance committee. But in terms of picking up some of the points around interest, we are seeing significant interest. Councillor Miskell mentioned Elshaw House, so that is a development the council brought forward. It's in the top 1% of sustainable office buildings in the UK, which puts it in around top 20 of developments in the UK. And by having that type of development, we've attracted people to that building who may have left the city. But we're also setting a clear mark to the rest of the development industry in Sheffield that office occupiers want that type and quality of development. So I think whilst we've taken the risk, the long-term reward is by setting the standard of what we want for the city centre and the future occupiers that will come along on the back of that.
Thank you, Shaun, and thank you councillor Auckland. That then takes us to councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. As I say, I mean, can we say, just before I start, say, welcome a report that does give a summary overview of where we are on lots of projects. But I think, yeah, obviously we've all got questions. So I just wanted to talk about the Future High Streets Fund for a bit. So could we just be clear in terms of Event Central? So I'm just very surprised to read that the work is only going to start in January 2025. Why is that? Why is there this, you know, several months delay from sorting out this contract to the work starting?
Thank you councillor Sanger. Alan.
Basically, it's because we have selected an operator for the building and we need to work in combination with the operator so that the works are suitable for the operator to do what they want to do in the building. So there's a period between now and the construction work's doing and, you know, and that's starting for that to happen. So that's the main reason for that delay.
Thank you. So and you're saying 1.3.23 that the work at that building is not dependent, is not at risk of the 31st of March 2026 deadline? So, you know, when we get to that point, when enough funding stops, the Event Central scheme is now separate from that funding. Is that what you're saying? Sorry, I have a misunderstood that sentence.
I've probably not presented it properly. I think the deadline for the funding relates to the Future High Streets Fund element of it. All the funding that's going into that building doesn't have the same time scale, but we would hope that that building was substantially done by the deadline of March 2026.
Okay. I mean, I think the wider question about Fargate is absolutely key to the retail offer of the city and understand that this is about a future high streets and getting other things happening at Fargate. I think what I don't get from this report is where we've scaled back from the original bid, which was talking about High Street and Church Street as well. So we've scaled back to Fargate and now we're saying that we still haven't got the extra money from SIMCA yet. And there's still the final, the full business case is still yet to come. So I'm still not clear what the final amount of public investment will need to be for Fargate. What the final sum of money will be and when is the deadline, even if, you know, even if the government's extended the time scale. I think what the people of Sheffield want to know is when will Fargate be finished and how much of the investment will be public investment and how much will be private investment and understanding that balance.
Shaun, are you able to help us?
Yeah, I think just to clarify the point on that. So all of our schemes is covered in the report of suffered because of the time when funding was given and construction price inflation. So we've had to reflect our work according to that. Event Central has been one of those buildings as well. In terms of the current work on Fargate, that's due to be completed by the end of this calendar year. And we are then looking at the work on Event Central starting early in 2025. And the piece of work we're now doing is working with a contractor and the operator to develop a proposal within the funding that we've got available to deliver that scheme. And that should all be completed by the March 26 deadline in terms of the funding deadline.
That's helpful, but, and that's really helpful. Can you just explain, but I read from this that the front door scheme effectively starts when that, when the future high street finishes. So from, you know, you move from lots of Fargate being dug up to Chapel Walk being dug up. I mean, is that not the case? Is it not the case that? we're still going to see a lot of construction work in that area for the next, for the two years after the end of that first deadline?
I think the front door scheme work is ongoing now, they are grants that we've given to third-party organisations and that work's due to start imminently. So that is grants that we've given as part of the Future High Street Fund to other organisations. And I think you've had the work on some of those buildings down at Chapel Walk is due to start any time. Alan?
We've done a press release on the timing of the work at Chapel Walk. I think if we get you a copy of that, then that might clarify your question.
We can certainly make sure that councillor Sangha has a copy of that. I think probably one thing that I would say councillor Sangha as well is that, you know, you've alluded to it and without making a wider political point here, that these projects have been hit by cost pressures. And we know why that is, it's because fundamentally Liz Truss crashed the economy and we in Sheffield are having to pay the price. And actually, we've been working really hard to deliver on huge ambitious regeneration projects across the city. I think there's one thing that I would say, and actually I think we do need to be comfortable with construction work. You know, we know that there is an end in sight to work on Fargate and that's brilliant. But actually, seeing that construction work is about seeing a city on the up, isn't it? And we are seeing cranes across our city developing and bringing forward regeneration projects. And I'm proud about that, despite this committee asked questions and scrutinises, but equally, I think we have to be comfortable with construction.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I'm certainly comfortable with construction, I just want to make sure that we understand where projects begin and where they end. So my final question, and then we'll come back for comments at the end after other people. Just talking about pipeline projects, I mean, one of the exciting things about the about the local plan that we're currently taking through is moving more, you know, is the possibility of more people living within the ring road. When I was first elected, there were 100 people living within the ring road, now there's 20,000, the plan is for 40,000. I just wondered, given the importance of that, would it be possible to understand where we are in terms of these pipeline projects and the master planning of these proposed new housing developments? Because it seems to me that that's so important to the 15-year plan that we've all been supporting in terms of the local plan. So just, it seems to me that that should be a key priority of the council.
Councillor Sangha, I think Shaun is going to provide an update on that.
Yeah, we can certainly bring forward road plans. I mean, the benefit of this report is to give an overview of a lot of work as we've seen. So we can certainly bring forward more detailed proposals to this committee in terms of updating the work we're doing with Homes England and the priority neighbourhoods and the timescale for those. And I think Will may want to come in from a planning point of view as well in terms of those housing numbers.
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Sangha, you're exactly right. I think, you know, there is a real thrust within local plan that is now with government and surely will be moving into examination. There's a real thrust there about repopulating the city centre, not only to provide the homes that Sheffield needs, but also to underpin some of the things that we're talking about, our culture offer, leisure offer, to underpin some of our public transport provision as well as councillor Fox was talking about earlier. It's really important that we get people living in the central area so we can underpin those services. Just in terms of your specific point, yes, the local plan sets out a number of priority framework neighbourhoods where we've been really prescriptive about these being brand-new housing areas with character. And that's really important. It's important that people feel that there's an identity to the city centre. It's not just about delivering 20,000 new homes, these are new communities, they're new neighbourhoods. And just underneath that, we've got the catalyst masterplan areas which colleagues have mentioned we're working on with Homes England. And we hope for some very good news on the first of those, Furnish Hill and Neeps End in the coming weeks. We've been through all the stages of approval with Homes England and we're just waiting confirmation from Treasury that a significant amount of money is going to be used to purchase land in those areas. And collectively, across the three catalyst areas, we're talking about five or 6,000 homes. So a really big chunk of what we're saying needs to happen in the city centre, 20,000, will be directly controlled either through land ownership or through partnership working with this council. So I totally take on board your narrative there. And I think it's really important that the council is bold and works with partners to be able to drive investment into those housing areas that we've identified through the planning documentation. So hopefully some really good news on the first of those catalyst sites in the next few weeks.
Thank you very much councillor Sangha and Will for the contribution there. My next contributor is councillor Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Alan, for this very comprehensive report. It's provided a really useful, I hate to use the word snapshot, but it gives us a picture of where we are with so many developments across the city, mainly in the city centre, but also things happening in Attcliff and closer to my area in Parkwood Springs. The Chair's already alluded to the difficulties that we've had particularly these last 13 years with a government that has been at times hostile towards local government, has created all kinds of economic problems with Brexit, with Liz Truss crashing the economy, making both borrowing for capital requirements and the inflation with construction cost pressures. So to manage all that, I can only commend officers for your part in bringing so many interests together to get these projects moving. I just, I would like to ask just one question, it just covers a fairly small part. Under connected places, point 197, page 54, going on to page 55. You refer to making an improved bus stop or a bus stop hub at Rockingham Street adjacent to Pound's Park. If memory serves, buses will be moving south down there and will either be headed towards Arundel Gate or they will be turning off, going out westward. But given that you've got now a very well-used pedestrian thoroughfare across from Pinstone Street going down to the, into the moor and all the footfall there, I do think it would make sense to have a bus stop or a bus stop hub for south-going buses to get people closer to the city centre, because that is something that councillors have received an awful lot of flak over since we pedestrianised this area. And so if we could have bus stops closer to where Pinstone Street meets the top of the moor, I do think that would benefit more people in Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chaplin. Alan?
I haven't got an answer for that, but we'll take the point away and discuss it with the teams.
I think we'll perhaps have to get you an answer. I know we've got Tom Finigan Smith in the room, but he's not able to contribute necessarily on this item, but we can certainly provide you with a written answer on that one. And my next contribution would be from councillor Merzaro.
It's really great to hear about all the public improvements in the city centre, all the regeneration. It's really exciting for me as a ward councillor to hear about this. What I would like to ask about though is public toilet facilities, because we're really short of these, we've had a massive loss of these. And another one has now gone in Orchard Square as well. A lot of people are wary of coming into town if they can't make use of toilet facilities, especially if they have to ask in pubs or cafes. So that means a lot of people are prevented from enjoying the town centre. It makes it difficult for people with babies and young children and people with medical issues. And other cities have really good public toilet facilities, which are really good for people because they understand the importance of these. What are the plans to have decent public toilet facilities in the city centre? And are these going to be included at an early stage?
It's a really good question, isn't it? And before Alan answers that, I think, you know, we know that, don't we? May of last year, we opened up a new set of public toilets as part of Pound's Park. And that area has been incredibly successful and those toilets really well-used. So councillor Merzaro makes a really important point. Alan?
I was going to mention the toilets at Pound's Park. And I think this boils down to whether we've got control and the ability to do it in terms of a strategy for it moving forward, I think that's part of the extra work we need to do now. There isn't a current plan, but where there's opportunities, we are pursuing it. So we've provided it at Pound's Park, we're looking how we can provide similar facilities at Castle Gate, although maybe not in the same way. And via through the development of plots around it, they might have those facilities in it. So that's my short and half answer to you.
And we also know, don't we, that the city council works alongside the Sheffield bid, the Business Improvement District, in order to have a scheme where members of the public can use toilets at different sites within the city centre. We need to expand that, but we also need to make sure that we've got more public toilets that are provided by the council. Councillor Merzaro?
Yeah, just to say that a lot of people are reluctant to go into cafes and bars to ask. So we do need to have another option as well. So it's good to hear that there is this strategy for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gilligan-Cubo?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report and it's good to hear all this news. I have two questions. The first one, I think councillor Sangha started for me because I was very curious about the finishing times for Fargate. And then I take councillor Miskel's point, he said we should welcome cranes and I'm sure we do. But I just think the public need to know when they can expect things to be finished. Because I think that is what irritates them, they just talk about all these cranes and it's happening and we don't really know when it's going to finish. So I just want to say, I wasn't aware that we had the end of 2024 for Fargate. So now I'm aware and that's really good. And I just think we need to try and bring the public with us, tell them what we're doing and when they might expect to see things. I know there's always slippage, but that was just following up from what councillor Sangha was saying. And my second question is, again, we welcome all the house building and the increase in residents to the city centre. And I appreciate that most of these are going to be tower blocks. Have we got a clear idea of the quality of the space that these tower blocks will create? What kind of living space? And for me, what is most important is will they have outdoor space? And will they have balconies and verandas? Because for a good life, you need to be able to get outside sometimes. And I'm hoping that we're just not going to put, because there's loads of blocks already up with no verandas or balconies, nowhere for people to go outside. And I think for a good vibrant city centre, we need good quality living. So are we going to make sure that happens?
I'll pick up on what Will said on this in terms of where we can have some control. And we're trying to work on those catalyst sites for five, six thousand of those. The plan there is high-quality design, it's not all just tower blocks, we're looking at family living, we're looking at different ways of doing it. We're looking at the potential for them to be dual aspect, so you have light front and back of your house. And that is to set the standard. Other than that, the controls we have on private development is through the planning system. Where we can use our land, we will, and where we have that control to set the standard, we will. But we need other mechanisms to ensure that happens. I think it's important that we learnt from the Covid thing in terms of people's need for outdoor space. And that's why we're doing what we're doing at Castle Gate and what we're doing at Pound's Park. So absolutely, we need to make the city centre a place that people can live.
Thank you, Alan. Will, I think you'd like to contribute?
Yeah, I'd just like to come in on that because I think councillor Gilligan-Cubo makes a really great point about, you know, housing developments need to cater for our communities properly. And I think, you know, Alan's mentioned the control that we can exert over development typologies when we are the owner or are in partnership and we're doing that. So for example, in the first proposals for Neeps End and Furnish Hill, as Alan's mentioned, you know, minimum space standards, minimum levels of larger family homes, proper outdoor space built into the masterplan from the beginning. All of those things are things that we can control. Just to bring to your attention, I'm sure you already know, but we are setting new policy guidelines in local plan around space associated with apartment living, so minimum space standards for the first time. We're also bringing forward a city centre design guide at the moment, being worked through by really capable colleagues in the planning service, led by my colleague Ashada. That will be looking at exactly the things that you discussed, which is where we don't have that influence through land ownership. We do it through the planning system, we do it through local plan. It's really important that we set a new benchmark for the city centre and we encourage developers. And where they are not willingly providing space, that we legislate through our planning policy documentation.
And Shaun?
Thank you councillor Miskel, probably picking up on councillor Gilligan-Cubo and councillor Sangha's point. I don't know if members of the committee were aware that on the 6th of February we simply gone off, sorry, yeah, we issued a press release about a new website and new webpages that we've dedicated to all of the city centre activities. So the Welcome to Sheffield website now has dedicated pages that has got all the information on all of our projects and progress that Alan's mentioned. And is a really good way both for visitors, residents and everybody to get good updates on where we are. So we can make sure we certainly circulate that around members of the committee as well. So it is a good way of that was launched very recently.
Thank you very much and thank you councillor Gilligan-Cubo for your question. That therefore moves us into the second part of this item, which is if members wish to debate the report. I understand that councillor Sangha indicated that he wanted to a short while ago. Does anyone else wish to make a further contribution? And councillor Auckland, so councillor Sangha?
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, clearly we welcome the report and we welcome the work that's going on. And cities do change and it's important that the council leads that change and that we lever in private sector money and we work with partners. When you knock on doors anywhere in the city, people will grumble about two things. They will grumble about the state of the buses, that they're not reliable enough, they don't go where they want them to go. And the second thing was that they will say, well, the city centre used to be better in the old days, whenever the old days were. Or they will say, when will the city centre look better? Or when will the city centre have things for me to be attracted to? And so it tends to be buses in the city centre is what we all get. So it's really important that this committee deals with those two issues. So really welcome this report. I've got a number of comments. So the first one, I know this is techie, is governance. I do not believe after two years that we have got the right form of member governance for this. We had 21 years of the cabinet scrutiny system where we understood that there was a leader and there was a cabinet member for development. And reports would go to the cabinet and we would see them. What we have now is that we have reports like this, which are really useful, but are narrative. We have capital reports at finance which are useful and detailed. We have strategic reports at Strategy and Resources. And then we have detailed reports at Regeneration Board. And so to follow these items, you have to read all four sets of minutes. And that is a lot of work for the 84 councillors, given that we're balanced. And I just think there needs to be a better way for members to engage in this because the current system is a challenge. So we were very, we as a group were concerned when regeneration was separated from economic development. Now, that's clearly a point of party political difference that we can't resolve. We thought the TRC agenda would be too big and the work plan would be too big. And that we, as a group of nine on TRC, wouldn't be able to do the depth on regeneration because we would be dragged into detail about transport. I still hold that view, but I accept that colleagues in other groups don't accept that. But even allowing for that, I do think we need to do some more governance work. How the 84 councillors can keep on top of these regeneration schemes, given how many there are and the importance of them to the city. So that would be my first point. My second point would be we need to be more rigorous in terms of timescale. I think a timescale, what we tend to talk in finance of this three-to-five-year timescale is the right time to talk about for regeneration. I was on the City Challenge Working Group in 92, 93 that talked about so much of the 50s, 60s developments of Sheffield not being fit for purpose. And I remember in 96, Heart of the City coming to my group for the officers briefing my group on what needed to change in terms of rebuilding the city centre, reprofiling the retail offer, about bringing grade-one office space into the city centre. And, you know, that was 28 years ago and 28 years is too long. And, you know, that was 28 years ago and 28 years is too long to think about regeneration because the requirements change, both clearly the retail world changes. It's changed an awful lot in the last 10 years, certainly from a 20 or 30 year horizon. It's changed too much for people to keep up with. So I think there's a real need to keep the framing horizon a little shorter. In terms of, so in terms of detail, we are obviously really pleased that some of the, with the way the Heart of the City project is coming on stream and that the work that, some of the vision that, in the final, the final piece of that vision that came in 96, 97, is that with a few notable omissions. I mean, clearly that, those reports did talk about a plan for, you know, a plan for the central library building. And clearly we've not yet got that. So there were bits in the 96, 97 paper that we still haven't resolved. But this report does remind us of all the, of where we're going with Heart of the City. As I say, I think the retail challenge that I mentioned in terms of future High Streets and about Fargate and then moving on to High Street, we're clearly, we're clearly not at a final point. And I, we clearly had a lot of construction inflation and we cannot predict what construction inflation will be like in five years' time or 10 years' time. So it is important to get an understanding of end points. Clearly the Castle Gate is important. Castle Gate is where Sheffield comes from, getting that site right. You know, this committee, we understand the overall vision, we understand the partnership working. We now have got a lead, you know, now we've got a board coming. So progress is being made. I can't tell you how many reports I've read about Castle Gate in the 33 years I've been a councillor. And therefore, half of my feels until I see it finished, I'm not going to believe it because I've seen so many reports. But, you know, we do support the, we do support the vision for Castle Gate. Can I just say in terms of, very, very briefly, in terms of West Bar, we remain concerned about the level of public risk, the rest of the council risk in the West Bar project. That's all, we noticed the partnership with Legal and General, we noticed Legal and General taking the lion's share of the risk and that's good news. We still remain concerned about the risk, given where council finances are up and down the country and given that other councils have got in a muddle in terms of their investment strategies. So we remain sceptical and concerned about where West Bar will, happy to be proven wrong. And I say, I think my final point, rather than going on and on, really important that the city changes, really important that development happens, really important that regeneration happens. We've got a very exciting local plan in terms of how the city centre will look. And it is a complete contrast with that City on the Move, you know, the 1973 video that you see at the start of the full Monty. It is very different. It's people living and working in the city centre. It's, it's a vibrant place where people, you know, enjoy not just at work, but also in terms of their leisure time. And that people from outside the city centre can have easy access to it by a transport system that works. So we understand the vision. We understand the need for this report, but I don't think this report quite captures all of that. All I've done, actually Chair, is think again about how we can get a governance system that works and for members to get, get a better flavour. But also from a perspective of more than three decades here, just be, trying to be realistic about what will be achieved in the next three to five years and accept that some of the projects necessarily are going to be longer. You're going to take longer than that and understand the difference between, you know, short, medium and long term and understand the level of public sector risk and the need to bring private sector investment into our great city. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you councillor Sangar. I think it is also probably important to reflect, and you did allude to it, that we do have a very different form of governance on many of our regeneration projects. And I think that's to be celebrated. We know that in Castle Gate, Paul Blomfield is leading that, but it is, it is an area board that brings together different stakeholders in the community. I think it's entirely the type of regeneration that we should be seeing, co-created regeneration projects, working alongside the community to deliver. We've got a similar model in Attair Cliff where Clive Betts plays a similar role with the regeneration that's happening there. And we are in the process of setting up a similar area board for the Parwood Springs redevelopment. That's just short of £20 million worth of redevelopment in the Parwood Springs site, which will be chaired by Jill Furness, bringing together different stakeholders in that community as part of that project. You raise some really important points as well as that. Councillor Auckland.
Well, well, Chair, I've been around long enough, not as long as to have been part of the good old days. Some of our experiences were a bit mixed when you, with the benefit of hindsight. But I think members across the board do sincerely want the city to succeed and be on the up and to capture the next stage of city centre development. What the public and people who live and work and depend on the city centre. And I think there is evidence in the report that we've caught the flow tide. And you so often have to catch the flow tide in life to make it a success of something. And I also think we might have reached the point at which for a while now and going forward, we've got sort of like ambition and opportunity and the possibility of investments sort of like aligned. And if we can do that and continue to do that, then the city centre will prosper. I feel confident and that certainly will be to the good of all of us in the city, on the council, in this room and officers today. Some officers have got a long experience of this journey. And I think they must be able to see that things are getting brighter and a bit more comfortable these days. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Auckland. And I don't see any other contributions from the floor, any members wishing to. I think councillor, you know, Auckland raised a really important point about the flow tide. I think I take a slightly different perspective. I don't think we have caught the flow tide. I think that we've created our own flow tide, haven't we? After 14 years of a Conservative government that's been disinvesting in Sheffield and disinvesting in the North and we've managed to bring about this radical regeneration project that we see before us. So moving on to consider the report, it is on page 43. And the recommendations are simply for us to note the information that's contained in the report. Is the committee content to do that? I'm seeing lots of nodding. Well, thank you, Alan, for presenting the report and writing it for us. And thank you also to colleagues for contributing to the discussion there. That therefore takes us on to the next items in our agenda today. And Amanda is just handing that to me. Thank you very much. That takes us on to item nine, which is the Forward 20 Miles an Hour Scheme consultation report. We also have a similar item, item number 10, about High Green, but we do have to take these independently. I think we have Lisa and Tom, who are going to run us through the reports today. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, good afternoon. I'm hoping to be brief, so I hope I don't disappoint after the last agenda item. So this is the report of objections to the 20 mile an hour speed limit order in the Fullwood area. There is a boundary plan as an appendix in the report. We sent out just under 4,000 letters to the residents within the boundary, including an A3 plan. The information was also contained on our website and a link to that was included in the letter. We received 409 responses, 157 objections and 252 in support. In December, a petition was brought to this TRC, which supported the scheme but wanted us to go slightly further, including Fullwood Road just outside Nethergreen School and Crimacar Lane. I wasn't at that committee, but I watched it keenly. And since then, I've done some work with our road safety team. And I'll move on to that separately because it's not contained in this report. So the main theme of the objections were that people broadly support a speed limit outside schools and in contained areas, but they're not supporting the blanket approach that we're doing. I've responded to that. That is our policy, that we are taking the sternal approach and making all residential areas 20 mile an hour. Other people have suggested that the scheme is a waste of money. It would be better spent on things like potter repairs and highway maintenance. The scheme is funded by the Road Safety Fund, which is for schemes of this type. And even if this scheme didn't move ahead, they're not interchangeable. We've got our PFI managed by Amy, who does deal with our highway maintenance. So this specific report asks for the objections to be considered, overruled and for the scheme to move forward. I've also been able to propose the 20 mile an hour speed limit outside the school that the petitioner has asked for. That doesn't require a traffic regulation order, so that can be agreed by the committee today. I will be writing to the frontagers, just as a matter of courtesy, but no formal consultation and therefore no objection report will be required for that. Also following some of the consultation responses, asking that Crimacar Lane be included. I've done some extra work with our road safety team and I am now able to include that in the scheme. That will also deal with the petitioner's issues. That also brings out some extra roads that we are able to include in the scheme that is called the Lodge Moor area. I've managed to get that consulted on fairly quickly, so that is out for consultation as we speak and will be reported to a future committee. I'm hoping to get it to March, but it's very tight to get the necessary sign off. So fingers crossed, I'll try my best. So the report recommends that the scheme go ahead as proposed and the part-time 20 mile an hour scheme outside the school also be taken forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And I see councillor Shaw wishing to make a contribution.
Thank you, Chair. It's kind of a combined question and comment. Just firstly, follows on from councillor Sangar's comment about governance on 3.1 of the report and the, indeed, the High Green report. It mentions Cabinet Member for Transport and Development as one of the consultees. Surely the working on this scheme hasn't gone back that long.
Perhaps I have a new title councillor Shaw, maybe. Apologies, we can note that ever and we'll obviously address it.
Yeah, and I'm aware that the local councillors for the area, councillors Woodcraft, Alston and indeed Sangar have been working with local residents and officers trying to get the proposals right. Having like, reading through the report, and we've had several 20 mile an hour reports over the course of the past couple of years, they all, a lot of the objections seem to be about asking the same kind of questions about where the money is coming from, why can't it be spent on this, why is this being introduced in such a way? And I think it would be helpful for the letters and things that go out to local residents. At the moment, it just covers one side of a piece of paper. Can't the other side include some of this information? Because it certainly must take up a lot, well, it obviously takes up a lot of the residents' time to ask these questions in the first place. And also it takes a lot of time for officers to respond to them. So could we provide more of the information that's provided to us in the reports? So that people writing to us have the information upfront and can make more informed objections or things of support, please.
Thank you councillor Shaw. I can see Lisa smiling there because no doubt this is something that she's considered.
Yeah, absolutely. Completely agree with you. Most of the schemes I've consulted on, we have the exact same theme about air quality, cost. And I've actually thought about the same thing. So I've been working with the local area committees as well, who are kind of in the community and are hubs for getting the message out. And I've actually provided them with a sort of frequently asked questions in case anything comes to them. The only, I have actually thought about including it in the letter as well, but the only danger that you tend to get is that information has to be absolutely crystal clear because then you just welcome more interrogation of what you've added. So we do highlight the reasons that we're proposing these schemes, such as safety, encouraging cycling and active modes. And we often get a lot of freedom, freedom of, oh, I can't speak, freedom of information requests. Really asking for more information about where our data is coming from, about why people aren't cycling in this area. So it is something that's definitely on my radar to resolve because as you say, you know, answering the same questions over and over again, there's got to be a better way of tackling this at the source. And as I say, without the local area committees, I am trying to do that. And absolutely, I will think of how I can possibly manage, even having something on the website. But yeah, certainly, thank you again for that.
Thank you. Just looking across all the various schemes, there are definitely very common questions that we could include on the back of the letter. Thank you.
I think that's a really, really good point, isn't it councillor Shaw? And, you know, if we could incorporate some of those in our original communication, it might certainly address some of the concerns that people have. I've got councillor Merzouga and then councillor Fox. Councillor Merzouga.
Thank you. Thanks very much for the report. I notice in the report, it says that some residential roads are deemed not suitable. That's in 3.2.4. But given that it says elsewhere that the fairness recommendation says 20 mile an hour limits should be included in all Sheffield residential areas because of the proven relationship between injury severity and death, why aren't we following this recommendation and why are some roads not deemed suitable if it has that effect?
It's the language that is suitable in all suitable residential roads rather than all residential roads. So in our 2012 and 2015 policy, there is criteria for the roads to be subject to 20 miles. So there can't be any A roads, B roads and C roads taking on their own sort of merits. So the average speed of the road has to be under 27 miles an hour for it to be a sign only 20 mile an hour scheme. This is only subject to sign only schemes, which is what this scheme is part of. So we can make roads 20 mile an hour that have, you know, physical features, speed cameras, but subject to just sign only schemes, which this is. There is quite a strict criteria and that's why originally Crimacar Lane wasn't included because it didn't meet the necessary criteria. But because of some other changes that we're making in the area through our road safety team, it now does fall into that criteria. But I think another meeting, I think councillor Sangar asked the question about how we can update the policy to possibly include more roads that are A, B roads, ones that don't meet the threshold currently. And I know that that is going to be brought to a future committee meeting. And I'm all for absolutely including as many roads as possible. It's more difficult for me to exclude roads and hence why we're now doing a separate bit of consultation to make this area bigger.
Yeah, that's brilliant. It's great that the scheme's been extended. And thank you very much for the background information through the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you councillor Merzouga. I think that point is one that we are mindful of as a committee. How do we consider refreshing that policy? But also how do we bring other stakeholders along with us? So for example, we know that South Yorkshire Police have a particular policy position about average speeds and their responses to propose new schemes. So all these items do, would need working through. And therefore, we're moving on to councillor Fox.
Thank you. That was part of my question as well. But just to add on to that about the police and the enforcement, we often get, you know, as councillors, told that police don't enforce it, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of money. I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can do to, and we can't control the police obviously, but, you know, explain a bit further as, you know, trying to change people. It's about changing people's habits. Is there anything we can do to enforce that?
Yeah, you're exactly right. And that is one of the responses that comes back from people, how is this enforced? You know, it's pointless putting wholesale speed limits on roads if they're not enforced. And that is one of the reasons that the criteria is there for the roads to be wholly low speed anyway because the police have indicated they basically will not be doing any enforcement of these schemes. And it is about driving behaviour of drivers, knowing that they're in a residential area, the speed that they should be travelling at is 20 mile an hour. And I think that the more that we roll And I think that the more that we roll out this programme, there is starting to be an acceptance of that, and people do feel, and I know that this comes from the residents, that it's a feeling of safety and it's a feeling of knowing that they should behave a particular way. And one thing that I really want to do as part of this programme is go back to schemes I've introduced and start to look at whether they're working. That is a commitment that I've made. And sometimes if we do get people contact us saying that they're in a 20 mile an hour scheme, it's not working, you know, people are speeding, I will put some speed surveys down, because I've always got a batch going on, because I'm working on so many schemes. And most of the time, they are really low, so people's perception of actual speed and the actual data that comes back when I put a speed survey down, you know, don't always marry up. But I do definitely want to commit to looking at these schemes, and if there is a problem that needs resolving, or if there's anything else we need to do that is physical, we can certainly look at that.
Thank you. I do think that we need to change people's mindset, don't we? Because I've witnessed, you know, I'm travelling at 20 mile an hour and somebody's on my backside and they're trying to shove me along, because they want to go faster. And I feel that if more people start travelling at 20 mile an hour, the ones that want to travel at 30 will start travelling at 20 mile an hour. And we need to get that as the norm around the city, don't we? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think councillor Fox's question also alludes to a wider question, that whether 20 mile an hour zones actually work, and we know, don't we, that they are an effective way of reducing and preventing injuries on the road, and we have to talk about that. When they're put in appropriately, we know that they are a good thing. I don't see any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution. Or councillor Sangha?
As I say, it was largely been comments rather than questions. So where do I start? Obviously, big thanks to Lisa for getting this report to committee. So I think I have to say to colleagues, maybe in 2005, when we turned down the opportunity of having a citywide 20 mile per hour residential, maybe we should reflect on how long it's taking. And if you don't grab the opportunities, they take a long time to come around. I mean, clearly, you know, I remember 2012, 2013, when we had a citywide plan for residential streets, I thought, and forward was going to be 2016, I thought, oh yes, I can wait to 2016. And then I remember asking myself and colleagues, asking when it was forward was going to come up, and it was Cabinet Members saying, yes, it was on the 2018, 19 programme, it was on the 1920, and then Covid happened and everything slowed down. So really pleased that we kept pushing, kept pushing, and finally we had this consultation. 409 responses. I mean, just thank the people forward for being interested. I mean, 409, I mean, it's a very large response, and as councillor Shaw and others have said, maybe if we give more information out, we can have more of a dialogue. So really big response. And I can really thank officers for, you know, responding positively to the public questions, those, if you like, free sets of questions. One is Lodge Moor, why does it need to wait X number of years after this, when the road network's clearly very connected? So anything we can do to get the report to March Committee would be really welcome. So that's the first thing. The second thing, in terms of the change for Crimickar Lane, I mean, Crimickar Lane, at busy times, you shouldn't be doing more than 20. So really, really pleased, this recommendation of, to say that C class roads, as long as the conditions allow, can be included residential, I think that's really good news. And thirdly, in terms of the safe routes to schools, I mean, the challenge here has always been about the school traffic, and so the traffic around Hallam School, but, you know, I know previous times we've done the work around Nevergreen Infant School, and this time, finding a solution for Nevergreen Junior School, and it's not, it's not an easy solution, but I think the solution we're going for in terms of 20 mile per hour at those times is, I think it answers part of the petitioner's request, and I don't think it goes the whole way. I think the petitioners would want to see active travel supported in terms of getting to and from school, and I think that in a safe way, and I think that would require 20 mile per hour in a wider area, and I think that's a challenge. I think the petitions have provided us with a challenge, I think we need to, you know, reflect on that. But I think overall, I really welcome this report. I say, I welcome the introduction of 20 mile per hour on these residential roads. I welcome the fact that we've been able to include Crimickar Lane, and I welcome the fact that we're making the travel to and from Nevergreen Junior School that little bit safer. And I look forward to the extra work in terms of the streets around Lodge Moor. So big thanks, big, big thanks. It's been a huge part of our inbox for the last three or four months, so really glad to see that it's coming to fruition. So I urge colleagues to support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Sangha. Are there any other colleagues who wish to make a contribution? No. I guess just reflecting on councillor Sangha's contribution there, I think, you know, over the past decade, we have created 34 of these 20 mile an hour zones, and that's in line with community demand, and we know that that does make, and we're all nodding, our city's safer and our community's much safer. We've also got, and the report talks about, doesn't it, about how we've created 12 child safety zones in the city, and we should be proud of that. And we know that our next committee meeting, we're bringing forward a road safety action plan that will outline our Vision Zero approach to making Sheffield's roads safer. So I certainly welcome this report today, and I know that colleagues across the room do as well. So that therefore takes us to considering the report formally, and that's contained on page 59 of your agenda pack. And we are asked to approve the forward 20 mile an hour scheme, order to be made as advertised, to approve the introduction of a part-time 20 mile an hour limit on Forward Road outside Nevergreen School, and to note that objectors will then be informed of the decision by the council's traffic regulations team and the order implemented on streets, subject to no road safety issues being identified through a road safety audit at the details design stage. Do I see any member who wishes to dissent from this report passing? No. Looks like we are all in agreement, which is excellent. Well, thank you very much, Lisa and your colleagues, for bringing forward this report. That therefore takes us to item 10, which is the High Green 20 mile an hour scheme consultation report. Lisa and Tom.
So this is the same report that I've just spoken about, but in high green. So we sent out two and a half thousand letters to all residents. We also had large copies in the local parish council. We received 61 responses, 36 in support and 25 objections. Again, the theme of the objections were a waste of money. People did tell us about individual issues that they were dealing with, such as antisocial behaviour, criminal acts. People reported issues of parking that wasn't being enforced. I've responded to all of these issues in the report, and anything that the council can deal with, such as parking, has been passed on to the relevant department for them to look at also. There's also a part-time 20 mile, 20 mile an hour outside the school on Greengate Lane, and the recommendation of the report is to allow the scheme to progress in light of the objections, including the part-time 20 outside the school on Greengate Lane. Excuse me, sorry to lose my voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Do I see any colleagues who wish to make a contribution or ask a question? I certainly don't, but thank you. Therefore, we'll move towards a vote on this particular item, which is in your agenda pack on page 175. And the recommendations are broadly in line with what we had in the other report. If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. I don't see that. So therefore, we are in agreement, and I see that the committee is nodding, and therefore we will pass this report and the recommendations. Thank you very much, Lisa and Tom, it's really appreciated. That therefore moves us on to item 11, which is about the Clean Air Investment Fund, a really exciting part of our agenda. And we have Amanda Cosgrove, who does some excellent work on the Clean Air Investment Fund, and also Kaz, who's going to run us through the report today.
I understand that the report is agenda item 11, and it may not be part of your agenda pack, but it certainly has been circulated in advance of the meeting. Amanda. Apologies, I think Tom's going to introduce this item. Oh, you're going to both of you. Thank you very much, and thank you for the work on it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to introduce the front half of this report, really, before Amanda takes us through the key aspects around the recommendation. Members will be fully aware that we are approaching the one-year anniversary of the launch of the Clean Air Zone, and the report highlights some of the key background issues, in particular some of the headlines around the monitoring that we've already undertaken on the scheme. I just wanted to run through some of those, because I think it's really important that whilst we've already updated committee around the timelines for full evaluation of the first year operation of the scheme during 2023, that there are some really significant evaluation results that we can share at this time, and were reported in slightly more detail in December last year to committee. So in terms of the current position that we're in, we have got some significant developments around the fleets in Sheffield. Table, table one, at section 2.2 of the report, sets some of this out, and these are from direct surveys that the city councils have undertaken across Sheffield, both before and after the launch of the scheme. Whilst we're not able to, we don't have at this point, the full 2023 air quality roadside monitoring information, a good proxy indicator in terms of the implications of the CAS and the changes that are arising within the fleet in Sheffield, and how clean or old that is, are through these results. So the table splits out each of the vehicle types that are affected by the Clean Air Zone and subject to charges should they be non-compliant. And it can be seen that there's been significant upgrades to fleets right across those different fleet profiles. Between October 2023 and November 2022, very significant improvements to the age of the fleet. Now we're in a position where the majority of our private hire vehicles in the city are compliant. The increase there is that we've now only got 6% of the fleet as of October 2023 that are non-compliant. Hackney cabs, again, significant reduction in non-compliant vehicles, they're now reduced down by 56%. Our HGV fleet that is entering into the zone is now 99% compliant, and so on and so forth. Some significant moves in terms of the age and cleanliness of the fleet as a result of the Clean Air Zone going live. The report also sets out, and is linked to fleet change, the positive uptake of our financial support measures that are funded by the Clean Air Fund that was provided to the council. At section 2.4, you'll see another table that shows that over 1,200 applicants have now received funding to support them to uptake a cleaner vehicle. And our forecast at the moment, that the pipeline of applications will mean that around 80% of the funding that we have available is going to be committed. We're continuing to review the Clean Air Fund scheme, and we're working at the moment in exploring further potential flexibilities that we might be able to bring forward to the benefit of people in Sheffield affected by the Clean Air Zone. The overall position at the moment is that the further evaluation and analysis of our scheme will be undertaken in early summer, and we'll be able to share further information around the air quality changes as a result of the Clean Air Zone and the average annual concentration targets that we've had for 2023 in early summer. Amanda's going to take us through some of the key issues in relation to the investment plan aspects of the scheme.
Okay. I'll just cover the summary of the recommendations to start with. So we asked the council to endorse, or the committee to endorse, continued relationships and liaison with government in respect to securing funds to improve the bus fleet, with particular focus on getting electric buses into the fleet in Sheffield. We ask the committee to endorse the approach to the Clean Air Investment Planning and continued development, and to endorse an initial commitment of around, of one million towards early investment. And I'll go through the proposal, which will cover what we're talking about for that investment. Just bear with me while I scroll down. It's in section three of the report, if you've got that. So the proposal leads on from the reporting that we did in December 2023, which set out the regulations, the legislation and the government's approach for the expenditure and the use of the CAS income. And in the report, we set out that approach and stress there's the opportunity now to invest CAS income to meet existing transport and carbon decarbonisation strategies. I'm just going through. Trying to pick out the highlights, really. The approach is to also continue to secure additional funds from alternative sources to complement that CAS income and maximise how we use that and the benefits that can be realised from that funding. General sort of principles, considerations, the expenditure needs to meet the legislation, that actually the things that we're looking to invest in can be delivered within a relatively short time scale, because our legal direction is to achieve air quality legal limits within the shortest possible time, and that we will invest in initiatives as a priority that reduce nitrogen dioxide from road traffic, and obviously that the interventions will lead to improved air quality. It sets out some key themes for that, and the initial investment recommendation, which is to invest in schemes that will improve air quality for children outside of schools or children travelling to school. And that includes school streets, mode shift stars, 20 mile per hour zones around schools, and neighbourhood cycling and storage to facilitate people to cycle, undertake those journeys in a different way rather than drive. The proposal also includes, part of the investment plan is to continue developing the longer term strategic proposals for future investment, so there will be further reporting as that goes forward, linked with other funding that comes on stream as well. 3.2 of the report sets out the approach in terms of, just a reminder that in December, we reported on the bus retrofit issue, Department of Transport's issue with the performance of bus retrofits and the need to rapidly move to a much cleaner fleet and an electric fleet wherever possible. So we are liaising with government, as are executive officers and other officers in the council, to try and secure additional funds to invest in upgrading the bus fleet in Sheffield. And there's a number of potential, well, there's a number of existing funding streams. There was a bid that went in with the Combined Authority for what's called Zebra Funding, which is electric funding for electric buses, and I believe there's a decision due on that, hopefully in March. That would make a significant sort of step forward. We have a stretch fund allocation that was awarded as part of the Clean Air Zone funding that is held by government. We don't have that money, we have to apply for it, but there is the opportunity to apply for that, to secure some additional funds, to increase the amount of funding we have to put towards bus upgrades. to put towards bus upgrade. And there is also an existing allocation within the grant fund financial support that Tom was mentioning earlier. That's supported around 100 buses to upgrade via retrofit and a retrofit is around 16K, so 16,000. So, you know, there will be a shortfall in that funding and so this continued liaison is really key to trying to get what's needed. So, I think that walks through the proposal.
Just to add, in terms of the time scales for the outcome of the underperformance of bus retrofits, which the report touches on and was mentioned again in December's report, so the full clarity and position on that from government, we're still awaiting. A report is expected on that and obviously that will influence in terms of the next steps and approach that we take. The next announcement, as Amanda has touched on, is expected to be around the Zebra Fund in March, but we don't have a confirmed timeline at the moment around wider bus issues within the kind of retrofitting programme. As soon as we understand that, then we'll need to kind of work closely with bus operators and lean into government to ensure that there is an appropriate mitigation moving forward with a focus on needing to really move to a decarbonised, zero emission fleet for the city. It was mentioned earlier that we saw some of the evidence of that in Leicester and the progress that's been made there and that really is a kind of a step change in some of the quality of buses, not just that they're cleaner, but the quality of those vehicles and the attractiveness of them for users is much higher as well.
Thank you very much, Tom and Amanda. I see councillor Chaplin who wants to make a contribution and also councillor Sanger and councillor Fox. Before they do so, I think it's probably important just to reflect on that contribution there and thank officers for the work that they've been doing on this particular report and just highlight, you know, we know that clean air for this council is a top priority for all of us and that the Clean Air Investment Plan reinvests £1 million from the Clean Air Zone to improve air quality and road safety for the most vulnerable in our city. Dirty air is a silent killer and that's why our Clean Air Investment Plan will bring and give back £1 million from CAS to improve air quality and road safety. Now, we've heard that this will involve more school streets to improve air quality outside schools as well as 20 mile an hour zones where they're appropriate. Schools like Australia Academy in Sheffield, I visited early in the month, which is our first secondary school to take part in the school street programme. Importantly, it also gives us a vehicle to invest future funds into clean EV buses in the future and Tom's talked about our recent visit to Leicester where we were able to see EV bus technology in place and how that was helping to drive up patronage on our buses. That's something that this council is committed to. All of these are really important steps that we are taking to improve air quality. Fundamentally, we don't want anyone to pay the CAS entry fee, but for those that do, our Clean Air Investment Fund gives that money back to the most vulnerable to improve air quality and road safety in our city. Councillor Chaplin, I think, was our first contributor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom, and sorry, I didn't catch you. Amanda, we should have given you a plate like what we've got. Thank you for that report and certainly I'd echo Ben's point that clean air for this city is so vital. We thought we'd sorted it in the mid-1950s with the Clean Air Acts then, but clearly with the increasing numbers of internal combustion engines, it's become evident that we need to clean air zones to clean up our city's air. So, I've got three questions, if I may. One concerns the area of Fargate where there was a report that got into the local press that emissions levels were still very high and I wondered if you'd got any information on that. The second with the buses, maybe common knowledge or it may have escaped me, are the diesel buses at present having to pay the CAS charge? There'll be a quick answer to that. And thirdly, the buses that you and I believe our Chair has also been down to see, the EV buses in Leicester. Leicester, as I recall, although I've not, I've only been round there once or twice, is a lot flatter than Sheffield, not quite up to, not quite the level of Cambridge or Ely, but are we confident that these buses would be able to negotiate the hills of Sheffield, thinking of going up onto Walkley and Crooks and Pittsmore and places? Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. I'll do them in reverse order if that's okay. So, EV bus technology, yeah, it's in widespread use. Leicester have got a significant fleet. The ambitions for Sheffield as part of the Zebra bid are to have 65 EV vehicles, EV buses in Sheffield, out of an overall about fleet of 400 that's currently operating in Sheffield. We know that EV bus is a viable option for Sheffield. Both First and Stagecoach have been running live trials, so they've been testing out different manufacturer vehicles on existing routes in the city. And the same questions that you've just posed is the one that they're trying to answer and the answer and the feedback that we're getting is that the trials are very positive. So, the range anxiety doesn't appear to be the challenging issue. We heard yesterday, oh, sorry, on Monday, that different times of the year, there are different drains on battery life, particularly in the winter when heating is required. But again, you know, that learning curve that others are going through at the moment, there are ways of managing that as part of their operations. So, yes, we do believe that EV bus is an option for Sheffield and would deliver with its significant air quality improvements, not just in the city centre and members will be aware of routes that cross the city centre, but out to those communities that those routes are served by as well. In terms of diesel buses at the moment, so there are around 400 buses in Sheffield, about 300 of those have been already subject to retrofit technology. There was a funding scheme that the government provided to local authority areas. We were successful in getting funding for around 300 buses that had that technology fitted. At the moment, those are all Euro 6 equivalent registered vehicles. So, the technology that was fitted to those vehicles, what it says on the tin was that they would be Euro 6. There is uncertainty around the true performance of those retrofitted vehicles now at a national level. So, that's the review that government are undertaking at the moment and we will wait to see what the outcome of that is, whether the underperformance that was identified is a real issue and needs further action. In terms of the remaining 100 buses that are not Euro 6 diesel and therefore do not meet the Clean Air compliance standard, all of those vehicles and the operators of them had indicated a strong willingness to retrofit those vehicles. They were committed to do that using some of the Clean Air funding that we got from government. So, the £16,000 would pay for retrofit. Unfortunately, government paused that programme when they identified this performance issue. So, the bus operators have effectively been in a bit of limbo in terms of the kind of pause on that national programme. Retrofitting of buses hasn't happened since that. So, given that they are committed to change and every applicant through our financial support programme that is committed to that change, but maybe waiting for vehicle availability, they are on an exemption from charges. So, buses are currently on that exemption, given this challenging position that we've had from government. Again, when we know the outcome of that and we have further discussions with government about what mitigation is required, if it's not retrofit and that's not suitable, then an alternative mitigation will be required. Once we've designed that and got funding to support that, we will then need to look at how that is introduced to the operators and, you know, their commitment or otherwise to draw down on that support to change. And in terms of Fargate, are you aware of the position on Fargate?
No.
So, we might need to take that one away, councillor Chaplin. Fargate is certainly not on our radar of sites that were previously non-compliant or have been showing as a compliance issue within our monitoring to date. So...
Yeah, sorry, the buses don't actually go up Fargate, but I think they list the stops as Fargate even though they're on Church Street.
So, yeah, Church Street, High Street, kind of end of Fargate. So, yeah, again, that isn't a location that is on our radar from a historical current location where air quality is in excess. We'll take that away and confirm that though.
Thank you and thank you for taking that away. I think it was the matter that councillor Chaplin refers to was reported in the media in December of last year and it was part of a survey of high streets across the city and a press release from a campaign group, as I understand it. So, it'd be appreciated if you could take that back and perhaps get back to councillor Chaplin, which I'm sure you will do. Can I just ask for a refresh of anyone who wished to contribute to perhaps stick your hands up again? Okay, I'll go for councillor Fox first.
Thank you. Just going back to the buses, we would have to be looking at the charging, charging thing for the batteries for the buses, I presume. And as we already adhere to, that we are quite early, we're going to be using, the battery life's going to be used quicker than what it probably would be in the flatter areas. So, would the bus operators be looking at where they actually put the buses for the charging, to be able to charge the buses? Because, you know, we have many times when we have congestion and people are holed up as we did have in the snow and people are, you know, what would happen to those buses? So, we need these scenarios built in, just to add to that, just a comment. My question was originally about schools and the investment that we're looking to spend around the safety of schools. What we're told over and over again is about the enforcement and people idling engines outside schools and although we have the signs, people ignore them, they park on zebra lines and things that are no-go. And obviously, when we get the enforcement officers there, they disappear and then the day after, they're back again. So, would we, you know, we have these red lines that we have in certain parts of the city, are we looking at and considering those so that enforcement can be, they can be immediately fined? Because unless we start changing people's habits, they're still parking outside schools, it's horrendous. Particularly in my area of Burley, but also I've witnessed other schools and how it's, people just don't, you know, adhere to the lines that we've got there already. So, have we got any plans to do something more? Thank you.
Tom, before you do that, because we are approaching what will be in the end of our meeting, we do have to ask for the committee's consent to extend our agenda in line with the constitution by half an hour. Do I see agreement from the committee to do that? I can see the majority of people saying yes. I appreciate that, does put pressure on people. Tom?
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. I'll just touch on EV charging for buses. So, as part of the ask to government through the Zebra 2 bid that's been submitted, there's funding, a refunding request for 65 buses in that, but also charging infrastructure to of the bus depots in Sheffield. So, the preferred position from operators is that charging occurs overnight at depot and that those vehicles, once fully charged, rely on the range that those vehicles will have. And again, that's where the testing of vehicle range comes in. They're confident that the charging overnight provides them enough power in those vehicles through the full day. That is again, something that operators are looking at and kind of learning from all the time. The other thing just to mention briefly is that the Sheffield City Connect service, the city centre hopper bus, is also going to be converted to electric vehicles much sooner. So, those should be launched in the spring this year and charging infrastructure for those vehicles is in place at Pond Street Bus Station at the interchange. So, that is the kind of first bus charging that is in place. For the issues that we have around schools, absolutely agree that there are real challenges in terms of people's compliance, that consistent enforcement is essential. We do have a limited resource in terms of kind of boots on the street and they do go to priority areas whenever possible and also respond to reports of issues. Idling engines, the advice that we have to undertake there is before we're able to enforce with a fine, we have to advise drivers to switch off their engines and we have to give them a limited period of time to comply. It's only when they do not comply that they are then issued with a ticket. Naturally, people, once advised of the need to switch off, they do that. The parking on zigzag markings outside schools, the yellow keep clear markings, we already have undertaken across the city an enforcement programme on that. So, we have enabled those markings, which are usually just advisory to drivers. We've applied a traffic regulation order to those, which prevents no parking or loading, so effectively no stopping at school start and finish times. That restriction is effectively the same as a red route. A red route is no parking, no loading, no stopping. Our enforcement team are able to go out and if they see somebody on those zigzag markings to give them a penalty charge notice straight away. We do also use the camera car that does drive around the city to target some of those locations. As part of the development of our programme and the investment that's being made today, we will be looking at, you know, this balance between enforcement and the need to invest potentially in more cameras to deal with those issues as part of some of the further development of the investment programme. The need for red lines outside school, so we do actually have a red route in Sheffield in Totley, near Totley Juniors, and that was introduced as part of some wider redevelopment of the school, slight, a small extension to the school and a crossing that was introduced on the main road. The reason we moved to a red route on that location is they are mainly used on major routes, on main corridors and in that location, there was a small section of curbside that we couldn't cover by a zigzag keep clear marking and a red route restriction was introduced. So, my response is that in appropriate locations, then red routes near schools may be suitable, but all schools in the city that have the keep clear markings already, they are, they're already enforceable and it's around the best use of resource to make sure that that enforcement is undertaken. So, again, if there are specific locations, we'll take those away as a more immediate action to work with parking services and target those. But in terms of our wider approach there, then the potential use of the camera car or additional technology to support us on that enforcement will be looked at. or additional technology to support us on that enforcement, it will be more to look at.
Can I just come back in? Have we got any plans to buy any more camera cars?
So at this point, I don't think we have any more plans to purchase any more camera cars at this moment in time. You can use fixed cameras and, you know, you can move kind of fixed cameras around, mobile cameras, to undertake enforcement as well. But that's something that we will need to look into in more detail in terms of the most appropriate solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. And I think you raised an important point that overlaps our committee and it's actually about enforcement. And I think it would be really pertinent for us to ask the Wasten Street Scene Committee for an update on enforcement, because it's a really, really important point, isn't it? And does require more boots on the ground in order to do that job. I think also it's important just to reflect as well, you mentioned about needs to have charging technology. And during our visits to Leicester on Monday of this week, it was really interesting to see the gantry technology that had been put into one of their depots. And we can't be in any doubt about the scale of investment that will be needed in order to bring that about. I think it would cost somewhere in the region of 25 million pounds in order to to retrofit a depot and install that technology. But it's investment that this city deserves to make sure that we've got a clean, modern bus fleet and we're committed to do so. And that's why this clean air investment plan allows us to have a vehicle to invest in our buses in the future. Councillor Sanger?
Thanks, Jeff, investing in the future. Who would have thought of it? Anyway, clean air, so we welcome the report. We obviously, because we annualise the figures in terms of the night and dark side, we don't yet know success or otherwise. So that would be the first challenge. And speaking as somebody who, you know, does suffer from severe asthma and always been very keen that we do things that make a difference, even though if I personally think PM 2.5 is probably a better measure for some of us. But I accept that tends to tie in with the night and dark side. So we are where we are in terms of this report, so we're still waiting to see the difference. Really pleased to hear about the bid for 65 buses, electric buses. But we're talking about 400 buses. And if we're going to improve the bus network, we might want more than 400. So how would we go from, so first question would be, how do we go from this initial bid for 65 to something which would cover the whole fleet? So that would be the first point. But in terms of the figures, in terms of the compliance, and clearly very much welcome, very much welcome the significant reduction across all categories. So I think my questions would be on the categories where we haven't seen as much reduction as you would hope. What is the next step? So, you know, the issues that we had before us when we were taking this decision, like when we were ratifying this decision last year, was very much around Hackney carriages and light goods vehicles. And it seems to me that you've had good progress in terms of light goods vehicles and that operators are investing in compliant vehicles. If they're going down the diesel route, Euro six, if they're going down the petrol route, Euro four. What more can be done to encourage the operators of the remaining non-compliant vehicles? Given that we don't, we don't want to keep charging people forever and ever. And the idea of this is, the purpose of this surely is to get people to upgrade. And particularly in terms of Hackney carriages, given the cost of Hackney carriages. It was a very generous scheme that we and the government came up with. What more can be done to hit that final 37%? That seems quite a big part of the fleet is still, is still non-compliant. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you for the questions. So in terms of the need to kind of have a plan in place for beyond 65, and if we're successful with this first 65, that will be fantastic. But yes, there is a much bigger, bigger challenge around the full fleet. So in terms of, in terms of that approach, we're clearly working closely with kind of with South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authority in terms of the current Zebra bids. We will also want to have specific conversations with government about the challenges that Sheffield may face if the retrofit solutions to minimum compliance are not appropriate. Government have always taken a view around the clean air zone that it is about moving people to minimum compliance levels. Bus retrofit was the cheapest way to achieve that. But clearly, we will need to know what the final report is saying. Initial reports indicated that the performance wasn't as expected. When we know that, we may need to look at further and alternative mitigations if retrofit isn't the answer. And we will be wanting to have conversations with government. And we are having conversations with government about what that might look like, whether that involves some form of maybe local Zebra scheme for Sheffield and Rotherham, who are obviously jointly directed as a result of the government's direction on our clean air plan. But the funding would need to be at an appropriate level. And clearly, the scale of investment will be bigger than we expected at the start of the clean air process. So at the start of the process, and this is still the case, there are 300 buses out of the 400 that are compliant. And there are a further 100 that need to get to compliance. So those conversations and that plan will in part depend on how we the outcome of the review that government are undertaking. More broadly, there are also reviews around the operating model within the region. And, you know, the franchising review that is ongoing. As part of that, there are also reviews around the fleet and the ability to upgrade fleet as part of potential change. But the full and final plan, we don't have until we know some of those uncertainties and we get that feedback in particular from government. In terms of areas and locations in the city that may still be of interest in terms of needing to do more to tackle increased emissions. So this is again, something that we are looking at through the review. We will be identifying where, if there are still locations where compliance hasn't been met. And our experience from conversations with other clean air plan places are that, you know, they haven't always met compliance as originally expected. And in Sheffield, we've already highlighted the risks around some of our key locations being heavily dependent on buses. But if there are still locations of interest, then we will have to look at whether there are maybe some more localised mitigations that we can introduce. That may mean slight changes to the highway network. It might mean changes to signal control in certain locations. But we will look at that as part of the ongoing analysis and review. And ultimately, the evaluation of whether the scheme has achieved compliance across 2023. In terms of encouraging some of the fleets that may still need to kind of increase overall compliance levels, I think the kind of approach that we're taking is that we are, again, we're reviewing our clean air fund for some fleet. We are looking at where there may be some flexibility within the scheme to offer slightly different, slightly different support or widen out that support as well. Obviously, most of our schemes are limited in terms of the Sheffield boundary, in terms of the Rotherham boundary for the schemes. We know that a number of businesses coming into and out of the city, in particular into the city centre and the clean air zone, may not be from the most immediate area. So we're looking at what those flexibilities might be. And we'll be having conversations, obviously with the Joint Air Quality Unit and DEFRA to seek some of those confirmed approvals to any change to the scheme. We're also kind of intending through our comms to target our taxi licence fleet again, to encourage them to take up offers that are available. I think one of the beneficial approaches that we've had is that at the same time we were launching some of our financial support for Hackney drivers, there was also a licensing change, which meant that the kind of range of vehicles they could potentially change to was widened out. I think that was welcomed by the trade. But we also are very aware that in terms of that point of change and that investment from the individual drivers, it will depend on where the age of that vehicle is. And, you know, whether there are, there's a long period left on that licence and that vehicle or whether it's shorter. So some people may be choosing to use those vehicles for slightly longer before upgrading. But we'll be having further comms directed to them and explaining the offers that are still available at the moment.
Councillor Sanger?
Yes, thank you for those answers. I mean, just on that final point, clearly, you know, we do need to keep the conversation going with with the Hackney carriage fleet, with the operators. And also the points you make about light goods vehicles. Clearly, they're, we, a number of my colleagues have had conversations with people saying they're no longer, you know, they're no longer bid for various jobs within the clean, within the clean air zone because they've not been able to, you know, get hold of a new vehicle. So can I just go back on two points? One is where, you know, as I said before, we need to wait to see if there are areas of interest when we've got to get the annualised figures. But going back over many years, there were other areas of interest. And one was the, one was the, you know, the one was the corridor around the train station, that the, that there were the night and dark side emissions from from the railway, with no, no effort in terms of what we're doing in terms of the road network is going to reduce. And the second was, you know, in terms of, in terms of where the motorway network impinges on Sheffield and particularly, you know, the Darnell Tinsley area, which historically has had poor air quality. The other point, the topographic, yeah, yeah. The geography of Sheffield means that air quality tends to be worse in the river valleys. And that wasn't the air quality, clean air zone we have worked up with the government. So I'm very much looking forward to seeing what can be done in terms of when the figures come out. Just to pull up the final point of questions, in terms of bus compliance, it seems to me, and I'm not an engineer, it seems to me that we don't have any compliant vehicles in terms of, you know, we've got compliant buses that are 2016 and newer, but the older ones, the 300 that have been retrofitted, the retrofitting has not worked. And that, I understand that the exhaust gases are not going over the catalyst at the required temperature. Therefore, we're not getting the required reduction in night and dark side. I mean, I think that that's the problem, that's a national problem, it's not our problem, and we need a national solution. Equally, the 100 that haven't been retrofitted because the programme has been stopped are not, neither of them are compliant. So we do have a problem now. I think we're all expecting that the figures will be much lower because it's not, the buses are not the only contributor to poor air quality. But I do think we need to continue to push the government to find a solution because it seems to me if we've retrofitted 300 buses and said they're compliant and they're not compliant in terms of the clean air zone that we've enforced, that that's not a position that we as a committee want to see, you know, six months, 12 months, 18 months in the future. So I would urge colleagues to continue those discussions with governments so that we can have a compliant bus fleet. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. Tom, are there any points that you can come back on?
Just to, just to kind of assure committee that that those exact points that councillor Sanger's raised around the need to potentially look at solutions across the whole of our fleet are absolutely where we need to be. And if that is the outcome of the report into the bus retrofit issues, then we, it's not acceptable if those buses that have a badge that say they're Euro six but aren't operating at Euro six were to continue in that way. Because we would need to improve air quality in Sheffield. And that minimum compliance level is there to do that. So we've been making that case very strongly and making the case that we will need solutions across our bus fleet that is truly non-compliant, subject to the outcome of that report.
Thank you. And I think the point about buses and the challenge that we face is really key, isn't it? We know that we have a bus fleet of about 400, just over 400 buses in our city. We have put in a Zebra two bid for 65 buses. But we know that the government criteria for awarding that bid puts cities like Sheffield way down the pecking order and prioritises rural areas that are in less of need for clear, clean air intervention much higher up. You know, the cleaner, the government has made a decision to deprioritise Sheffield in its criteria. We're hopeful that it'll make the right decision. But fundamentally, we also need the government to be able to match our ambition. And we have an ambition here to completely change our bus fleet, to make sure we've got 400 EV vehicles that are going on the roads in Sheffield. And we need government to match that ambition. And we look ahead, don't we, to a general election that is coming up? And hopefully, answer's been given to us there. Thank you very much, Tom and Amanda. Do I see any other member wishing to make a contribution or ask a question? That therefore takes us to the decision on this particular item, on the clean air investment plan. It's on page one of the supplementary report pack that has been put together for us today. And the recommendations are mentioned on page two of that particular report. Page two of that particular report. I will just read it out because councillor Chaplin doesn't necessarily have the recommendations in front of us. It endorses the continued liaison with HM Government for greater financial support to deliver zero emission bus fleet ambition in Sheffield to mitigate the impacts resulting from the performance uncertainty and delays relating to the DFT bus retrofit programme and the predicted effects that will have on achieving legal air quality limits within the shortest possible time, as per our ministerial direction. It endorses the proposed approach to clean air investment planning at the Clean Air Investment Fund and notes the further developments that will continue. Endorses the proposal to commit an initial 1 million of cash surplus income to accelerate air quality improvement initiatives around schools and improve air quality for children travelling to school as described in section 3.1. And notes that officers will keep members of the committee informed of the development of the initiative. Do I see any member who wishes to dissent from us passing this report today? I'm seeing hopefully members that are nodding in compliance that we would pass this report and therefore that this report therefore passes. So thank you very much, colleagues, for taking part in the discussion on that really important item. And thank you very much to Amanda for diligently putting the report together and Tom as well for supporting today. That therefore takes us to the formal end of our meeting today after we have concluded item 11, which was the Clean Air Investment Fund. So thank you very much for coming today. We look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Thank you.